Good evening, I'll call to order the Roca City Council meeting for January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Please rise for the pledge allegiance. Good evening, everybody. Good to see you. Just want to remind everybody to silent their cell phones in the audience and as well as our council members. At this time, I'm gonna get special presentations and or announcements. This time slot is for informational presentations and appointments and or awards to be presented by the city council or the city or to the city council. And we have swearing in of the planning commissioner Marley Billingsley by the city Roca City clerk, plan director Julia, I already pronounced her name wrong. The cheese concussing.
Look at.
Look, you see, will present the final draft of Housing Element two thousand and twenty-three dash two thousand and thirty-one.
I am Marley Billingsley. Planning Commissioner for the City of Waireka. Do solemnly swear or affirm. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. That I will well and faithfully. The stars the duties upon. Which I am about to enter.
And again, thank you, Marley, and welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity to present today. So we'll go to the next slide and start you guys off. Not going to take an hour and a half to two hours like I typically do on an item. Because this is a lot. So this is the culmination of work that the city's consultant plan West Partners, Inc. and myself have been working on for over a year. So this is the presentation of the final draft of the housing element for the years two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and thirty-one. And so on slide three, please. Today, we are just doing information only. This is just to introduce the item because, as you can see, it is a pretty substantial document. This is very similar to the document that came out last year for public comment in July, August, I believe, and actually, we'll see that on our timeline. But this is that that final moment. So we're going to go over some basics today. And so an element is a chapter of the city's general plan, and the general plan is the guiding long-term planning document for development and growth through the city, whatever growth may look like. And so updates are required by state law, and these are called cycles. This is very specific to the housing element. And so that's why we're kind of doing some of the element development out of order in some fashion. So this document is in the sixth cycle, so we're preparing that for your consideration. And then we have updates are prepared according to a statutory schedule. So we do need to have an adopted version of this by February fifteenth. And so next slide, please. The other elements of the general plan and the comprehensive process that we're going through will start after this one is complete because we want to make sure that we're meeting our statutory requirements for that. So the basics of a housing element is it's divided into a number of different sections. So it provides an assessment of the housing need of the city based on quantitative and qualitative data. So it looks at current and future housing needs, and we do that through the public input process and through analyzing that data. It's a package of data we received from the California Department of Housing and Community Development. That's from a number of different sources, which include the Census, Department of Finance, among others. I can get you exact information if you're interested in where that data comes, but we are pretty good about sourcing that in this document. We also want to look at opportunities for how we can get better and how we can provide better housing opportunities for the residents in our city and the residents who would like to be within our city. And then we look at constraints to housing production. And so that includes looking at governmental and non-governmental constraints. So governmental constraints is your zoning code, your development impact fees, different things that you as a city council can control. And there are non-governmental constraints like supply chain issues, overall cost of construction, the California Building Code, for example, which are outside of your control mainly. But there are ways that we try to address those to alleviate those constraints. So in chapter two of this document, you'll see that there are goals, policies, and programs that are recommended to meet the housing needs. So one of the other things we did with this document is there are several hundred different housing laws that have occurred since our fifth cycle update. So what we've done is in the chapter two, there is a small bear icon as well as a list of the different programs that are statutorily required. So those have to be in this document. You cannot take them out. The the state will not certify your final adopted document, and you could see fines or other issues with the state if you do not keep those goals and programs in. The other thing, too, is we do recommend adoption of or update of city policies, programs, and regulations to reflect these new state laws. Next slide, please. So identifying strategies and programs, we're focusing on conserving and improving our existing housing stock because it doesn't make sense to focus on building new housing if we can't maintain a significant portion of what we have now. So we do have a number of programs about that conservation and preservation of current housing stock. We also want to maximize our housing opportunities, and those are throughout the community. So when we're looking at applying programs, goals, and policies, we're doing that citywide. So we're not just focusing on focusing on one aspect of the city. We're focusing on the entirety of the city. We'll also look at assisting in providing affordable housing, and so that is divided into different income categories. So we have above moderate income, moderate, low income, very low income, and extremely low income. And those are all set to different per monthly rates for rent as well as looking at the overall income. And so that is actually in Appendix A, which is our housing needs assessment. And we're going to go more in depth. We do have a joint planning commission and city council meeting noticed for the twenty-fourth, which is next Tuesday. And so that's going to be the purpose of the meeting is to really go in depth into this document, give you some extra time to look at questions, take public input. And this is available for public comment now as well. We did already get our first public comment email, and I already emailed them. So we're also, like I said, looking at governmental and other governmental constraints and housing investment. And then finally, there are some new requirements in this cycle, which is promoting fair and equal housing opportunities. So I believe it is Appendix B is our AFFH assessment, which stands for affirmatively furthering fair housing. That is both a state and federal mandate that we have to address within this document. Next slide, please. So how do we meet our housing needs? We do that through a number of programs, like I said, reducing constraints to housing production. One of the things you'll see in the programs that is optional, it is not a state requirement, but we feel is very important based on the input we've gathered, is supporting workforce development in the trades. So one of the things is not having enough people in the trade. So working with COS as well as other education entities to help train more people to be able to be electricians, to be HVAC specialists, et cetera. So those are some constraints to housing production that we work on through this document. So we're providing additional support for housing programs. So there are state programs for reduced rent vouchers for ADA retrofitting of houses. And so we want to make sure we're supporting those programs that are already in place and not recreating that program. We're going to be updating our regulations to meet state requirements, as I said before, identifying housing sites. And so Appendix C is all on the site analysis. And so each time we do a cycle update, we have to designate a site where we could meet our regional housing needs assessment numbers, which you'll you'll find in this documentation we'll go over next week. And then rezoning sites for higher density residential uses if needed, and then increasing maximum permitted residential densities if needed. So we'll go to the next slide, please. So I'm going to take you through our update process as it sits right now. That may be a little bit small, but I'll give you the the bridge version. So this process started in October of two thousand and twenty-one with the city council hiring Plan West to put this document together. I arrived in November of two thousand and twenty-one to assist them as well as do as my do my other duties within the planning department. But this process started in earnest back in October when the city council chose Plan West Partners as their consultant to put this together. So housing, like transportation, is a very, very specific type of planning field. And it takes a lot of knowledge in this field to be able to meet all of the state requirements. And so that's why we usually go with a consultant to assist us because it's very difficult to know every single one of the hundreds of housing bills that have passed since the last update. So they assist a lot with that technical kind of background, and so they will be available for your workshop next week as well if you have technical questions. So we did start with our first community workshop on January twenty-sixth. That was a general workshop outside of city council and planning commission. That was basically an open learning about what's in an element and then just taking open input on what the general public sees as issues to meeting our housing needs for the community. That was then replicated in two different open houses. We had some housing-related activities. I still have a map with all of the dot exercise that we did during one of those in my office, if you want to take a look at it. We then went into a city council workshop to summarize the input we had gathered at that point in April of two thousand and twenty-two. And so we put that together with some recommendations. We did also have an item at the planning commission to review as well. So between April and July, we also did interviews with key stakeholders, and so those were realtors, developers, a housing advocates, employers, and property managers. And so we took those people within our business license system, separated them by type, and gave everyone an open invitation. For the most part, I'm sorry, Corey, you get the ultimate decision. So we did not interview you. But but we did want to make sure everybody had a chance that would like to give input into this topic area. And so we went through those interviews. We actually did include them in the final draft. They are in the last appendix of this document because the state had requested we include the input we had got from that process. So that input was included into this and gave us direction on how to move forward. So the planning commission held a very similar style workshop as this, where it was information presentation of the item in July of two thousand and twenty-two, which started our thirty-five day comment period. And so this was out to the public for those thirty-five days after that meeting. We also had another planning commission meeting in August and then finally brought it to the city council at the end of August for the public hearing and approval so that we could send it to the state. So the way the process works is we approve a draft, and then we send it to the state for a ninety-day review period. And so that was sent off to the state September twelfth, and we received our comment letter a little bit less than the ninety days. So the state was more efficient than it said it was going to be, which is very rare. So so this document is basically now the culmination of those state comments and then any other public input we had received after that August thirtieth meeting, which we did not receive any additional comment towards housing during that time. So the HCD comments, that letter will be included in your packets for review to see what they had commented on ours. I believe we only got thirteen pages of comments, which is low for a lot of people. So it's a lot. And so it did take us some a while to go through those comments and adjust this document to meet those. So we'll go to slide eleven. We'll talk about the outreach. So we did a lot of outreach with outside agencies through direct outreach and email groups. So we worked with the Continuum of Care because of their expertise in the unhoused and making sure that we're addressing that issue within this document. Siskiyou County, the Planning and Community Development Departments, Health and Human Services, Behavioral Health, as well as sending it to our Board of Supervisors. Nancy O'Gran does get these emails directly. She also got a copy of this final one. And then we also met with the Karuk Housing Authority because they provide housing within the city on tribal trust land. And so there is kind of some synergy between that. And so coordinating with that group is really important. Because again, the people living in that housing are usually working within our city as a whole, and they need services that support that. So in addition to contacting direct outside agencies, we did request that any update or any announcement that we had, we asked that they sent it through their email group just to continue to get the word out about public comment and input opportunities. The other items we did is we posted in the newspaper, which is both in print form on Wednesdays as well as online. We did advertise on social media, and then we do have an email newsletter group that also requests information on the general plan and really. And we also did announcements at city meetings, so trying to make sure that people were aware of what was going on, making sure people who we knew that were interested in discussing this topic were able to give input if they so choose. And then we also have information on the city website as well as our Waireka General Plan two thousand and forty-four site. So all of the public comment that we took from those workshops is all available on the website for people to review what people said. So that is all completely transparent and open. People can take a look. We did summarize in some cases, but for the most part, we tried to stay verbatim as well as providing photographs of any type of activity that we worked on. Next slide, please. So here are the general recommendations that were presented in the draft and what we heard from public input. So we found that we need to provide additional support to all housing programs. So we have not done a good job of keeping up with our education pieces, keeping up with our implementation of our Cycle Five Plan. We just didn't have the capacity or staffing at that time to do that, and we have now allocated funds to be able to do that now. Zoning code is considered a major constraint to your housing production at this time. Your zoning code, for example, requires a significant amount of permitting for high density residential in high-density areas, which we typically want to see high-density go to the high-density areas and not to low-density areas. So that is a major constraint as well as updating our setbacks as well as our lot standards. Workforce housing was a very common public input that we got from the general public as well as our employers. So if you'll, those of you who were at the Lola meeting last week, we had a very lovely presentation from the Rain Rock Casino General Manager, and they're looking to add a number of jobs. And the number one issue is he's experiencing is housing for his workers. We heard similar comments from Pfeiffer, COS, the Fairchild Medical Center. So that is a common thing for most of our major employers. And so housing has become an economic development issue for you. We have even heard from some of our smaller businesses in the downtown area that they have issues keeping staff. Because again, you know, low-income individuals, which is what mainly makes up our retail sector, have a difficulty affording the rents that we have right now. So we need to provide a higher supply to be able to bring down some of the demand and hopefully equal out the rental housing market in that fashion. So workforce housing at all income levels. So I think that was a big thing to note for this is that we're not really as focused on affordable housing. We're really focused on getting those workforce units. So that's everyone from moderate income, which is anywhere from fifty-five thousand to thirty-two thousand to our lower income, which is thirty-two and less. So that's a that's a lot of our retail workers is right in the thirty-two area. So the other thing, too, we found a lot of people were requesting is small-scale, single-levels housing for older and disabled and/or disabled residents. So we do actually have more than the state average and national average of people experiencing a disability. That's what I just recognized by the Americans with Disabilities Act. And so having a single level and removing steps, removing a lot of impediments to these types of people is was requested for ease of mobility. One of the other things we found in the housing needs assessment is that a significant amount of our three-bedroom, two-bath, single-family homes are being lived in by people who are over the age of fifty-five, who may be empty nesters, who may not want to have that size of a house anymore, but can't find something that meets their needs, which what we heard was a smaller-scale, manageable, single-story residential unit. The other thing that we did here, and actually, this is completely from the public input. We never offered this, is adaptive reuse. And so adaptive reuse ordinances or adaptive reuse concepts is utilizing a vacant or underutilized commercial property for mixed use and housing development. So for example, the shop co-building could be used as a apartment complex or could be redeveloped into what we call a mixed use, which would be some retail and some residential in it. So this was actually directly from the public. We heard a number of people ask, why don't you just utilize your vacant buildings for housing? And so we have included a number of programs in this document for that use. So we'll go to the next slide, please. So draft changes, there is a memo that will be in your packets with all of the draft changes, and it is also on the website with this document. So we did add four programs that are state mandated. The first is water sewer connections, which was an interesting one to us. We have to develop a policy to ensure that affordable housing units have equal access to water sewer connections as a non-affordable unit, which is basically what we do now, but we have to have a policy saying that we do that. So it's a very easy one to accommodate. The next one is our accessory dwelling unit ordinance, and our language is out of date. And so a separate entity at Housing and Community Development will be sending us a full multi-page memo on what we need to change to be in compliance with those laws. So a program was added to comply with that. Again, state mandated, have to have that in there. The other one is streamlined ministerial approval, which is Senate Bill thirty-five, which requires us to have a streamlined ministerial approval process for affordable housing units and objective design standards, which we actually are working on at this time and should have completed by summer. The city council and the city had gotten a grant in two thousand and twenty to work on that project, and with the transition, it fell kind of to the wayside. So we're bringing that back up. And so that will hopefully be done by July, so we'll already be in compliance with that program. And finally, we do have to add a program to update update the definition of a family in our zoning code. And so this is actually based on several federal court cases that have clarified that we have to be very careful about how we define what a family is or what a family isn't. And so the state has identified our definition as non-compliant, so it is not enforceable, and it is not legal. So we need to change that or take that definition out. It's a very common practice in planning now to take out the term family. Because the reason why a lot of people put this in place is when you say single-family home, well, what is a family? That starts to get into some social arguments that we do not want to touch with a twenty-foot pole. So we typically argue not to have a definition of family in your zoning code and to designate single-family units as just single units and and work with those definitions. The other big thing, too, is you have a certain circumstance where five people who are unrelated may be renting a house that is perfectly legal to do, but some cities have tried to use you're not a family under our definition, and it's a form of discrimination. And so we have to be really careful about how we do that. And so that has to be updated as well. So and again, all four of those are state mandated. They have to be included in this final draft. We did have seven other programs that were revised. The revisions are in the memo that you will have access to. Mainly, it's just language that is used. They want to be very particular about the terms that we use in our our programs. And again, they are all state mandated programs that we have to have anyway. So there is additional analysis that was requested for our housing needs assessment and our affirmatively furthering fair housing assessment. And so those sections have been added. For example, they wanted more discussion and analysis on our relationship with our tribal trust lands because that is within city limits, but they are not part of our general planner zoning code. So we do do have to kind of discuss how we interact with the Karuk Housing Authority. And so we added some narrative to that, but that did not add any programs, goals, or policies to your document. And then finally, as I said before, the stakeholder interview input, the state had requested to see all of that verbatim to the appendix. So that has been added to this one. That was not in the last. So finally, the rest of our public engagement schedule, we do have this open for public comment. Today is just an introduction of this because it is a very big topic area. And I like to just kind of get it out there and explain kind of how we got to this point. We do have a planning commission meeting tomorrow night that will be an introduction and discussion. That'll be one opportunity to give public input. Housing Element Workshop, which will be jointly noticed for the Planning Commission and City Council, will be next Tuesday to give you guys an opportunity to go really in depth. We will also accept public comment and questions at that time. And then we have the Housing Element Final Adoption scheduled for your Tuesday, February seventh meeting because we do need to have an adopted version to the state February fifteenth, and that is your last meeting before the fifteenth. We again, we are accepting public comment right now up until the meeting on the seventh at four P M. The between four and six-thirty usually gives me enough time to go through anything if we got anything last minute for the public comment. But we are accepting that. There is instructions on the website as well as all of our announcements on how to contribute that public input. There's three different ways. You can do a mail. You can drop it off at City Hall. In writing, you can email me, or you can come to one of these meetings and give public comment on that item. But that, any written comments or emails do need to get to me at some point because if they're just coming to you guys, I am not able to respond or record those for the state. So if you do happen to get those emails, please direct people to email me directly so we can keep a log of that, please. So that's it.
All right. Thank you, Julian.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to item number three, public comments. Public participation is welcomed and invited at all Roca City Council meetings. This time is set aside for residents to address the city council on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on a regular agenda. If your comments concerns an item noted on a regular agenda, please address the council when that item is open for public comment. The city requests that person's addressing the city council refraining from making personal slanderous, profane, and disruptive remarks. Council members when recognized by the mayor may ask questions of the presenter, but no action may be taken by the city council during the public comment section of the meeting. Under Brown Act, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the posted agenda. This time is set aside for residents to address the city council on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on the regular agenda. If your comment concern and item noted on the regular agenda, please address the city council or the council when that item is open for public comment. Please speak into the microphone from the podium. The podium is electronically adjusts up and down to accommodate speaker. She can do additional special commendation, EG reboot microphone, please notice the city clerk prior to start of the meeting for arrangements. Please state your name for the record prior to providing your comments. Please address council as a whole. If you have documents to present, please provide a minimum of seven copies. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Public comment is not a public comments period is not included be a question and answer period conversations with council or city staff. The public comments.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jan Osborne, Waireka, California, and I am here to exercise my freedom of speech under the Constitution of the United States First Amendment in the Bill of Rights and also under that same amendment, my right for petition for redress of grievance. Some background. On December twentieth, the meeting of December twentieth, I believe that there was a grave error made during the public comments period. I had submitted via email comments that I had also requested that the city manager read during the public comment period, a process that had followed and other people have, at least for a year. I sent these email comments to every city council member, to the city manager, and to the chief of police. I sent these email comments to every city council member, to the city manager and to the chief of police. I fully expected that those would be presented as they had been, my comments before, at the meeting. On December twenty-first, I became aware that, no, they were not. And I wondered why would that be? Well, a reason was immediately furnished. And then I confirmed it by looking at the YouTube video of that meeting. The city manager had my comments, as did the council members. And when the time was at the end of public comments, he stood up and said that he had public comments from Jan Osborne, that's me. And he was not going to read them because it was under investigation. This had to do with an incident that happened on Green Horn Dam on December fourteenth. An incident in which I was a very unwilling participant. These comments were from me as a citizen of the United States and a resident of Wairega. They were my comments about my experience. But they were not read because it was under investigation. Who has the right to say, I can't make comments about what happened to me? Not our chief of police. No one has that right. I am not hired by anybody. This happened to me. I can talk about it. That was the public explanation. A second explanation was offered to me. And that was that prior to the meeting of the twentieth, the mayor had spoken to the city manager and said he no longer, the mayor no longer wanted the city manager to read public comments that have been sent by email. Read them aloud. Again, I repeat, this is a process that I had followed a number of times, especially during the heaviest part of COVID. You notice I still wear a mask. I'm at high risk. And I don't like to come out here. But at any rate, those things happened. I have tried to confirm that second explanation by sending text message. First, I made a phone call to our mayor, which was not returned. I sent a text. And then I received a text finally on Friday, the thirteenth of January, saying that look for an email soon from the mayor. I have not received that email. So I have no explanation for anybody about why my comments were not read. That's my grievance. Now here's what I would like you to do and consider doing, actually. The city council, I hope, will adopt a policy that states that written comments submitted to the city manager or whomever you want to designate to be read at meetings will be allowed. I've checked, other cities do this and sometimes even print the comments on the website for the city. But I urge you to, at the earliest date possible, to make a policy that allows people like me to make their public comments and have them read, not just so that you can hear them, but so the public, all the public can hear them and know what's happening in our city. I appreciate your consideration and I hope that always in your decisions about speech, you err on the side of freedom of speech.
Thank you, Jen.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Don Marie Autry. I wanted to talk about a few things. The homeless problem. It's becoming a third world problem. And people are coming to me. I've been giving them all of your phone numbers and asking them to call you, but they Facebook me, they call me. And apparently it's really dark up there at night and very, very dangerous. There was a visiting family member visiting someone who lives up there and she fell head over teakettle all the way down. And I said, did you call, you know, nine one one? Are you okay? Oh yeah, I'm all right. I got up and you know, just went to my car, but but if someone does fall drunk or not, or high or not, or you know, whatever the case may be, could they sue us? And that's a big, wow. That really worried me about that. Our legal issues. You know, how dark is it? Because I don't know. I've never been up there. Dark time. I mean, really? So that's a thing we need to look at as a city. I feel, and cars not being registered. The car in Walmart not being registered, no license plate. And they had a big, huge domestic dispute. Garbage was everywhere. Why are we allowing cars in our city? Not being registered, no license, no insurance, you know, what? No, absolutely no. It's not okay for me. It's not okay for them. And I do not care what their situation is. Get a job, get a life. I don't care. And, and also, there is a motorhome parked all over town, again, on Four Street. It's licensed, sure. The guy owns it. He lives on Anderson. It should be parked in front of his own home. And then the last thing is not every single person gets a water bill. So when you guys send out information into your water bill, it's great for if you pay a water bill. But people who rent do not get water bills. So they do not get this information. Not everyone has Facebook, but not everyone no longer gets paper anymore. You know, we need to work on media, social media. It's okay for the president Trump, so it should be okay for everyone else. You know, it was okay for him to give out legals, so it should be okay for us. So thank you.
Thank you, Don Marie.
Diane Collier, I'm kind of coming to the party late. Mostly because I work twelve, thirteen hours a day and you kind of hope this stuff, just like the rest of our country, doesn't fall into this kind of a mess. But I'm listening to this plan and this housing. And one thing I know for sure is the amount of money that has been funneled, you know? I've come to learn that grant is a really dirty word. It's a way to steal your money and then tell you how to spend it later. And when you get into grants, you get into, you get into constraints. And you get, you kind of get yourself held by the throat by these guidelines to where sometimes, you know, if you're smart enough and you work it, it might work to your benefit, but then there's times it doesn't. I'm kind of disturbed about anything that California does, honestly. The state is, you know, there are millions of dollars in the budget for human services and behavioral health to help people. And all it's done is keep people on welfare. They haven't gotten better. In fact, it's grown and we can't even get enough social workers to help the problem. So this isn't working. It's a completely broken system for decades. And now we want to turn our city into another, I mean, I'm not against housing people who want to work for it and get a house and but at the same time, I think we need to really be careful about how we go about this and what we're doing to our city and our community. I don't think, you know, I live up streets that have had a lot of low income. And let me tell you, the thieving and the, it's just all kinds of nonsense that goes on. It, it's horrible. It's not a good, people aren't considerate. You know, they don't have any sense of ethics or being respectful to their neighbors. And it's, we've got projects that are low income all over the city that are fails. I mean, look up at Bruce Street Apartments, go way up Minor Street. Call Y P D and see how many times they're visiting. And then the density, the, the high density, this is scary. Because the state has an agenda to wipe out single families. You know, and families of family. I don't care, say, how many people you have friends living with you, whatever. I mean, they're just getting ridiculous about these definitions. But if you have high density people living and they're going to all be low income, look at the motels out in Montague. Look around. We've already got these projects that they have tried to implement and they're failing. So what are we going to look like in Wairega? How much? And what are we going to rezone where? And how's that going to affect the people that are trying to have a nice home and keep a nice neighborhood? I just think, I'm not saying that there isn't a call, you know, for affordable housing because everything's upside down. My parents had bought four acres, built a tri-level three thousand foot home in nineteen seventy, before the freeway went through. And they did it for all about forty thousand dollars, which was both of their salaries combined. That house sold a few years ago, like ten, fifteen years ago, for half a million. Who makes half a million dollars? Who makes two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year? How many of us make two hundred and fifty thousand? How much is the average price house selling? What I'm telling you is economically, we're doing this between income. It's getting bigger and farther apart. So I just think that they're perpetuating a system that's broken. I just caution us to look at this and do it smart. And then let's not get trapped into their, oh, you gotta do this. Now you gotta rezone that. Oh. You know, the state is great at telling us what to do. And as far as the Karooks go, that's a little annoying that they're helping get the dams removed and that will destroy this county. Make no mistake. Make no mistake. Taking out that dam will destroy this county. You don't think the ranchers and everybody, because they have designs. The state has paid them off. They think they're going to get rich. And then they're going to have all these, all the money, so they don't care. There's not going to be a river for ten years. The sediment behind that, the cubic metric tonnage behind that dam is so immense. There's no way. And we're going to be footing the bills, the county. But, you know, they want things from us, but what are they doing to help us? So I'm just saying, you know, I'm, I'm not against the Karooks. I'm not against the tribe, but I am against you wanting this and then not helping us. You know, it's all for you. And it's, and like everything else, it's at the upper level. It's not all the people. There's plenty of Karooks who are against all that. Plenty of them. You know, so it's the, the elite few at the top who are making all bucks that get to tell the rest of us what we get to do with it. So I, I would just like to throw that out there. Look at our courthouse. The state decided that we needed a flat roof courthouse. What's our snow load? Come on. Yeah, our, our county officials argued that point vehemently. State wouldn't hear it. So anyway, I just, I just want to throw those suggestions out there.
Thank you. Any other public comment or public comment online, Rhonda? All right, then I will move on to number five, the consent agenda. Oh, actually, I'm sorry. This number four, public comment follow-up. This time for city council or city manager respond to public comments or may direct staff to prepare a report or place an item on our future agenda item. All right, nobody? I will move to number five, consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and non-controversial and will be enacted by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. A, approval of ratification of payments issued from December twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two through January eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. B, approval of minutes of regular meeting held January third, two thousand and twenty-three. And special meeting held January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. C, financial report on investments as of September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. D, cash balances, budget, the actual fiscal performance reports for October, two thousand and twenty-two. E, resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash O two, recognizing the city of Wairega's two thousand and twenty-three contribution to employees' healthcare costs through the IRS Section one twenty-five Cafeteria Plan. F, continue urgency resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash fifty-one, remote public meetings. And G, continuation urgency ordinance number eight sixty-four fireworks. Recommend city action, motion to adopt this consent agenda for the city council of the city of Wairega as presented. Oh, I'm gonna go to public comment first. It's okay. And we have a public comment on the consent agenda.
I do want to.
I don't know, but I don't know. Yeah, there you go.
Don Marie Autry, and I do want to make this public, this fireworks final. And I also want to add mortars to that. Because, you know, for the last week, it's been nothing but fireworks and mortars. And it, I know all these people who think that they need to celebrate, but you know, that hasn't been forever. We haven't had fireworks forever. But we have town and I'd like to keep our town. I don't want to be paradise. I don't want to be car. I don't want to be all of those places that lost their homes because of fire. And they lost their homes in November with snow on the ground. So we need to make that a permanent thing. And start, you know, the other night when the mortars or fireworks, I don't know what it was going off. They knew exactly the address, but they couldn't do anything. They said they couldn't do anything. I want that stuff too. When we know who it is, they either need to be in jail or they need to be fined. Thank you.
Thank you, Don Marie. Any other public comment? Okay, and I will go to city council members. And Mr. Davis, you had a question?
I believe we should remove that from the consent agenda and discuss it at a later date.
I don't know which item you're talking about, Mr. Davis.
Oh, I'm sorry. Eight sixty-four?
So, item G?
Item G.
Eight sixty-first fireworks.
We should make sure that our fire chief is present when we do discuss that.
Okay. As a, under my understanding, if we remove it from the agenda item, then the, the ban goes off tonight and that it's clarify that, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager. Under normal circumstances, you would remove this item. You would then vote on the consent agenda and then you would treat item G as its own item, the very next item, so you guys can discuss it at that point and still, still vote on it and then give direction on the possibility of having Chief Lemos at a future meeting.
Okay. Great, so is that, is that the wishes? And okay, with the council, remove item G. And discuss after we do the approval of the other items?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so I will go to a motion to the floor for public consent agenda items. With the exception of item number G, the continuation urgency ordinance number eight sixty-four for fireworks.
So moved.
So moved. And I, with one comment, glad to see our seniors being served with a new transit bus.
All right, I have a motion from Pro Tim McCoy. Do I have a second?
A second, Lane Keg.
And a second, Councilmember Keg. I will go to roll call. Councilmember Keg?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Pro Tim McCoy?
Aye.
And I, I, I. Okay, so now we'll go to discussion of G, the continuation of urgency ordinance number eight sixty-four fireworks for discussion script.
Yes, and Mr. Mayor, if I can just make a statement?
Yes.
You'd asked a question and I do want to clarify, that is, that is my understanding based off your question that if you technically did not pass an urgency ordinance tonight, it would no longer be in effect. So you are, that is my understanding, maybe if our attorney's on the line, he can weigh in on that. But that's the reasoning, these urgency ordinances consistently, they're required to come back every single meeting. And if we don't pass them, my understanding is they're void at that point.
Yes, and I don't think that you'd be able to bring it back up again later. We'd have to re-adopt the interim ordinance and as a new action and go for the, through the full process again, if it, if it gets passed over at one meeting.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Henyon.
So basically, you, we hold item G for discussion. If Mr. Davis wants to discuss it, that's fine. If somebody after he gets done with this discussion wants to make a motion, that's fine too. Just to bring the public aware that that's the process that we go through.
Okay, so then I'll bring it back to Mr. Davis for discussion, why the item?
I would really like to have the fire chief.
I would really like to have the fire chief present when we discuss that issue. So uh, like Mr. Hammond has said, maybe we should have an emergency motion or another motion that in uh, puts that number G back into effect until we can have the fire chief present. And I would move to do that.
Okay, but what I'm understanding that if we remove it, then we have to go through the whole process again and fireworks become legal. So people can set those off tomorrow anywhere in the map, right? You wanted to make the motion to keep it on?
Well, if, if we, it's not gonna be in effect. And until, if we wanna wait till the fire chief comes. And I think it's really important that we have his input on this, so.
So you're asking to leave it on?
I'm asking, yes, I'm sorry about that.
Okay.
And I didn't realize that the, uh, uh, ordinance would fall off if we didn't can vote for it ever.
Okay.
Meeting.
Okay, all right, I get it. Okay, so now I have, um, well, I, I go back to um, public comment again, correct? Public comment regarding um, G, continued or uh, the urgency ordinance number eight sixty-four for the fireworks.
Don Marie Autry, Fire Chief has already had his input on this and he agrees completely. We are needing no more fireworks. That's why we have an emergency man. It needs to be on there and it needs to be starting to actually be take effect by the police department and knock down no more fireworks.
Thank you, Don Marie. Any other public comments?
Hello, Diane Collier. Um, I guess I missed, I know you guys banned it during the summer. I kinda heard about it, honestly, I didn't even follow it, but I don't know what this ban entails. I mean, when somebody has a sparkler out in the street, that's not something that, you know. I don't know, those things, I think you had to be a certain amount of celebration. However, I did have the mortars going off on my street. They were like the ones they let off at the, that heck no. They were all coming down on our roof and I mean, that's how houses burned down, so that stuff. But people are still, like she says, they're lighting these big mortars off now. Just last night, somebody lit one off. And it's like, I don't know, having an ordinance is great, but then I know that there has to be teeth behind that ordinance. You can have an ordinance all day long, but if the laws, you have no way to prosecute, then that means nothing really. Kinda like what we have out in Chasta Vista with all the cartels. Um, so I, I don't know, and our jails are full, they're letting out which fell on today. Because the other one, they just have no room and so the state dumped them back in our labs, thank you. So anyway, it's my fault.
Thank you, Diane. If there's no further public comment, I will go back to the city council for the other comments.
And uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, so I better.
Uh, yeah, this is the city manager once again. So it was on, I was under the impression with the prior city council that um, the request was made to draft an ordinance and bring it forward. Is it more worthwhile, because I do, we do have a staff member that may have already started that process? Is it worthwhile that you guys have this discussion and give us direction on that? Or do you wanna wait until the ordinance comes forward to have this discussion? I guess my question would be, should staff exert any time to draft an ordinance that were, would make fireworks permanently illegal in the city of Wayrica? Or should we wait or, and put an item on the agenda that has the city council discuss it with our fire chief and police chief first and then get direction on what you want that document to look like?
I think we gotta recognize what Drake, Mr. Davis said and bring that back in another council meeting. We can move forward with this tonight. It's okay with the, what he stated and then bring it back for discussion of the next city council.
That's great. But let's, let's address the city managers. Does that mean then that we as a council want the, city want the office to stop working right now on a codified ordinance? Um, is, is that what you're saying?
Until we can have discussion as a council, that's, that's my, okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Gray.
No, no, that's what I'm asking, I'm asking.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Good, Mr. Davis.
I'm not in favor of the fireworks ordinance, just so you know. I, I would like to see people be able to use fireworks at New Year's on the Fourth of July. You know, my, my kids, when they grew up, we did them right out there in front of the house in the street with a garden hose right there. But I know some people always go above board. But I would like to see that, you know, for my grandkids, so they could do that too. Cause I have several grandkids here.
Right.
So, that, that's my point.
Okay. And Councilman Baker?
I have no comment.
No comment? Um, my only comment would be uh, as we have not had fireworks in two years now and it's not fair, we've been last year, we're ahead of the game, but the year before, we had to go tag the organizations that had booths up and it was a blow to them. They had already ordered the fireworks, so the Elks, all these organizations were stuck with the cost and we had to tag them to no longer sale. And so with the drought that we've had, we haven't had, I mean, some prison, you know, it hasn't been that way for years, so we've heard from a lot of um, people enjoy fireworks, like me and other residents who are, you know, against it. But I think um, we should bring it back since we do have a new council. Have the temporary ordinance in place, but then have them hold off Mr. Ledbetter, it sounds like, on proceeding with the ordinance and then we'll bring it back for a vote with a new council, um, whether we're gonna have the ban permanently or not.
Thank you very much, I think I have good direction. So basically, on a future, on the next city council meeting, we will have an agenda item for a vote and direction for staff to draft an ordinance to move forward on fireworks. Does that sound accurate?
Discussion, it sounds like, and then also Mr. Davis would like um, Mr. Lemos present, the fire chief for NYPD.
Okay, I got it, thank you.
All right, thank you. So uh, okay, I will go, uh, actually, you already made the motion to keep it temporary for um, G, correct, for temporary tonight? Mr. Davis, okay? Excuse me, okay, so I have a motion uh, on the floor from Mr. Davis for item G, continued urgency ordinance number eight sixty-four for fireworks. Have a second?
Paul has, Mr. McCoy has his hand.
Okay, and I'll second that. I have a second from Pro Tim McCoy and I'll go for roll call. Uh, Councilmember Keg.
Hi.
Councilmember Davis. Councilman Baker.
Hi.
Pro Tim McCoy.
Hi.
And I, Middleton, hi, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Right. Number six, um, old business, human resources. This is uh, agenda title, approval of city manager employment agreement.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members, members of the council. My name is John Elsman, I'm the HR director for the city of Wayrica. I'd like to present the staff report for a motion to approve the Wayrica City Manager Employment Agreement. To summarize the staff report, the revised contract includes merit and cost of living adjustments that are similar to all other full-time city employees with contracts. The agreement was also rewritten to have consistency in the language. Um, that's similar to other department head contracts. As you'll see in the summary of compensation, the staff report, the benefits mirror the same level of benefits as the unrepresented unit um, of Wayrica employees. And with that said, staff recommends a motion to approve the updated city manager contract.
Sorry, thank you, John. Okay, I'm gonna go to the um, public for any public comment regarding number six. This is for our contract for our city manager. Our new contract, I'm sorry.
Yes, this is the best thing we've never, ever, ever happened. And we need to give him like lots and lots and lots and lots of raises. I just love him, I love him, it's sweet for our city, it matters. So please make sure we keep him for a long time, thank you.
Thank you, Don Marie. Any other further comment? Okay, I will go to um, our city council members for any comment or questions and I will go to I will go to Councilman Baker. Any questions or comments? Regarding our city manager and his contract?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I appreciate Mr. Ledbetter and the work that he's doing for the city.
Thank you. A short, sweet. I'll go to Councilman Keg.
Add that to in uh, one heck of a year, who's been with us now a year. And glad we progressed in the last year and I'm bored to make some bounds in years ago. Thank you very much for accepting and
Thank you, thank you very much.
Uh, Councilman, or uh, Councilman Davis? Any comments?
Of course.
You think you need a raise? Uh, I do, and I'm all for this. And if we need a, a motion, I'll move, so.
Okay. Uh, Pro Tim McCoy?
City manager Ledbetter, um, I've been here as long as guy to my left, but I tell you what, of the three city managers that I've had the pleasure of working with you by far and away have the most care about this city. And I, I think that's deep, I think it's deep inside you. I think it also helps that you're married to a local woman. And um, I really appreciate what you are doing and trying to do for the city from business to homeless, from tourism to recreation. Thank you very much, thank you for your support of public works, law enforcement, fire department. I, I just appreciate it and I look forward to working with you many years.
Thank you very much and to everybody, I mean, this is uh, overwhelming and unexpected to be completely honest with you. So it's embarrassing for me for some reason, but thank you very much.
So you don't want me to continue embarrassing you? Okay, um. Uh, let's see, yeah, so he's still here, so we're keeping him and he's agreed to stay with us, so we're very lucky. Um, um, you know, we were, it was pretty frustrating when we were going through the process and um, things happened for a reason. Um, but then came Jason's resume and just uh, wow, we were blown away and um, just day one, he hit the, hit it running with really no, you know, no guidance or anything and he tackled so many problems and so many, we went through some turbulent times and the way he handled it without stress and just um, going in and having, you know, with me being on at that time, one year, but going into the city manager's office and uh, just seeing a plan on both sides of a board of where he, what he was doing, what his vision was, I was blown away cause I hadn't seen it, I was like, wow, and his vision for our city where um, citizens are, we're lucky, but our citizens are very lucky um, to have him. And I look forward to working with him and um, becoming the new mayor. He's given me some ideas and sitting with him once a week and just um, he is amazing and we are um, glad you're staying with us and um, for a long time, I hope. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so I will go to uh, the floor for a motion to prove the city manager employment agreement. Do I have a motion? I have a motion from Councilman Davis.
I'll second that.
And I have a second from Councilman Baker, I'll go for roll call, Councilman Keg.
Hi.
Councilman Davis. Councilman Baker.
Hi.
Pro Tim McCoy.
Hi.
And I, I. I, 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 I.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, thank you, thank you to everybody, thank you very much, Don Marie, that was very, very kind work.
New business city manager, this is the title, presentation and possible adoption of the America Community Action Plan. Recreation, I could, uh, yeah, yeah, economy for rural communities.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, this is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager, and thank you to the Wayrica City Council. So on uh, June twenty-third and twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-two, the Recreation Economy for Rural Communities Tour and Workshop took place with multiple local, state and federal partners, as well as with many members of the local community. A bus tour of the local area followed by multiple workshops with community engagement eventually led to the document being discussed before you tonight. The two-day event was attended by the city of Wayrica with attendance by myself, Jason Ledbetter. Uh, at the time, council members Deb Baird and Jones Smith Freeman also attended. I will now invite uh, Alia Roca Lesra, who's here with the Siskiyou Economic Development Council and Heather Dodds with Discover Siskiyou are going to give a more in-depth presentation of the workshop. After that presentation, I will come back and summarize the action items that the city would be participating in if you were to move forward tonight adopting this document. Thank you.
Good evening, uh, thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight about the Recreation Economies for Rural Communities program. As Jason mentioned, I'm Alia Roca Lesra and I'm here with Heather Dodds. Tonight, we're going to give you some background around the event, some information about the recreation.
I'm sorry to cut you off, Alia. Um, I'm, I'm thinking that you had sent me the slideshow and I don't think that our, I don't think I forwarded it to our assistant city manager. So if it's possible, can we take a five-minute recess and I can get that to our assistant city manager so that um, the slides I think are imperative to, to kinda see how this event took place.
Guess we'll take a five-minute recess, seven thirty-seven?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go. Great, luck as well. You know what?
I'm listening.
Um, I'm loving watching it. You can see it. Say, uh, to the back. You want fireworks? Can you sit down? Yeah, yes. She's got eleven. One. That would be January. Yeah. You don't make money. I mean. Other. You're after. Only attention. We're the friends. Well, our, well. We're not white anymore. Mister, I said so super loud. The others behind me. Back around the way. Can't you be so good to the ladies? I knew. It's like we see. We did, like that one on, was it on Martin Street? There was one that was there for a while. Maybe it was there. One day. I don't ever remember any kind of promotion here, like you can't. Well, that's what always I started. I guess. Well, admittedly, I've been like. The time. Yeah. Yeah. It's like Friday. Why? Not sure. I'm not sure. It's good. On the sea resort. And it's just large as. Heavenly. Perfectly. The body. Get a squat. Because of the new run. I'm wondering. Who does today? I was gonna say. Yeah, it's like.
Then at, uh, seven forty-eight. This is Ms. Clerk, seven forty-eight. Back in session. Okay. Continue. Thank you.
Okay, so tonight, we're gonna give you some background about the Recreation Economy for Rural Communities Program. Some information about the general recreation economy in Siskiyou County and in Way Rika specifically and provide you with some of the outcomes that resulted from the program. So the city applied for the Environmental Protection Agency's Recreation Economies for Rural Communities Program at the end of two thousand and twenty and received the technical assistance um, in two thousand and twenty-one. So Way Rika was one of twenty-five communities selected for the technical assistance. Um, and I just want to reiterate that it wasn't financial assistance. It was technical and planning assistance. Um, and this program has been successful in other communities, two of those being uh, the Pennsylvania Wild Center and Marion, Virginia. Um, so you can go to the next slide. So we formed a local steering committee as part of the process. And we worked with the technical assistance team and our federal and state partners, which you can see on the screen, um, to identify strengths and opportunity areas, set goals, and plan a public workshop and community tour for the City of Way Rika. And in this picture, um, is our steering committee, our federal partners, um, and some uh, local residents and leaders that came on the tour with us. We wanted the program to support local businesses while also respecting Way Rika's people, um, environment, and history. And um, as you can see on the screen, our federal partners included the Environmental Protection Agency, the Economic Development Administration, U.S. Department of Agriculture, uh, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, U.S. Forest Service, um, and several others. And with that, I will pass the floor to Heather.
Thank you. We can move to the next slide. So we just wanted to talk a little bit about what it means when we, um, reference the recreation economy. So when we talk about that, we're basically just talking about um, all of the abundant outdoor recreation activities that are available to residents and also draw visitors to our region. Um, so some of them specific to Way Rika would include hiking, fishing, cycling, rafting, et cetera. Um, and visitors who come in to enjoy those activities here, um, bring in transient occupancy tax money as well as local sales tax dollars. Um, so I did pull some stats here from the U.S. Bureau of Economic Analysis. These are obviously national numbers. Um, but just to kind of give some context to how big the recreation economy is in the U.S., it's a six hundred and forty-six billion dollar um, economy. And then, um, it offer, it provides jobs for six point one million Americans. And then they're in that blue box. We have a number that's specific to Siskiyou. Um, so we get, um, direct travel impact reports from Visit California for our county. And, um, they were able to tell us that in two thousand and twenty-one, um, there was a hundred and ninety-five point two million dollars in direct travel spend in Siskiyou County, um, which is really huge. So that stays in hotels as well as people eating in our restaurants and shopping in our stores and, and all of that good stuff. So, um, you know, it's, this is just to kind of show that we can't ignore the record, recreation economy here in Siskiyou County. And then the image on this slide was from another stop on our tour with our partners. Um, and this was when we visited the Collier Information Center, and everyone was super impressed at just the amount of information there and how nicely everything was displayed. And I believe, was it Grace Bennett, um, gave a really nice presentation there as well. So it was a really fun day. And next slide.
So, uh, part of the process, um, involved a, um, pretty detailed community self-assessment that the steering committee completed. And from that assessment, um, we came up with these four central goals that you can see on the screen. Number one, grow Way Rika's downtown amenities, enhance connection to outdoor recreation, and spot, inspire community pride and identity, and catalyze, um, business and entrepreneur development. And in June, we hosted a two-day workshop that convened our local leaders and federal partners um, to participate in several visioning exercises and create an action plan, a community action plan to, um, start planning around how to implement these goals. And next slide.
All right, that's the one. Um, so yeah, something we talked, um, a lot about at the workshop was this idea, um, that we really need a strong brand for Way Rika. And so, um, what we kind of came up with, what we suggested in our initial application and was strengthened at this workshop was this idea of Way Rika as a base camp to the outdoors. And I really like this graphic here because it shows like how central Way Rika is to so many outdoor opportunities. I mean, yeah, we have a lot locally. Um, but you can stay in Way Rika and, and make this your home base and see so much, you know, over to the coast. You can visit other areas in Siskiyou. Um, all while staying, um, in Way Rika. We call that a hub and spokes model. Um, we also pulled some numbers from Caltrans and, um, it's a little dated. I wouldn't say twenty eighteen, but, um, yeah, the I-five traffic is considerable, fifty thousand cars passed by us daily on I-five, which is a huge opportunity. Um, if we can pull those people off and encourage stays here. And then, um, the other thing I wanted to mention was we're able to leverage Discover Siskiyou's marketing efforts, like the bread and butter of our marketing at Discover Siskiyou is outdoor recreation. And so, you know, our, our job is to market Siskiyou as a whole. So if Way Rika has this really strand, strong brand identity, that just helps us position Way Rika further and, um, Way Rika can piggyback on a lot of our marketing efforts and dollars, um, to make their brand identity a lot stronger. Uh, next slide.
So some of the opportunities that, um, we identified during the planning process, um, you can see on the screen. Um, these include the Way Rika Lights Festival, opening a tap house or brewery in Way Rika, um, restoring the Broadway Theater, creating an outdoor recreation and tourism program, creating GPS audio slash audio history tours of the area, creating our Way Rika to Coast OHV Trail System, developing Way Rika's branding identity, encouraging gear rental shops, encouraging volunteer tourism and stewardship visits. These are just a handful of, um, opportunities and action items that we identified. There are others. Um, and after that, um, we came up with the people and organizations that could take the lead on starting to implement these outcomes. Some of the post-workshop accomplishments to date include, um, applying for the Rural Place Making Innovation Challenge to help provide planning support and technical assistance to foster place-making activities in rural communities. The steering committee members remain committed to the Community Action Plan and, um, seeing its success. And, um, our federal partners are still really engaged in this planning process. They still, I still get emails, um, from them with grant opportunities and, um, other, other news. Um, so they also are, they want to see the success as well. And, um, next slide, I think, uh, city manager will be speaking next. Oh, sorry, this was, this went along with my previous points, but yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Alia and Heather. Excuse me. So this document that you guys have before you this evening is a fluid document. So that just means that ultimately it should be updated and reevaluated and changed to work for the community and the city, um, as the times change or as certain items are taken off the list that have been completed, maybe more added. And ultimately, it's a commitment ceremoniously by the city that says, yes, we support this document and we're going to strive um, to implement this, these items, um, as best as we can to the best of our ability. But there's not technically, in my opinion, a legal obligation to do so, but ultimately it's supporting the workshop. It's supporting the, uh, the, uh, outpouring from the community. I think we didn't get to see within that room where we saw those post-its on that table, there were, uh, ten or fifteen of those tables. I mean, there were eighty people in this room. There was a large section of our public that are not elected officials that were there just out of interest for improvement within the city. And so tonight I want to talk about the items that I consider within the document that you have in front of you that the city would be making a commitment on. And so action item one point three. Minor street change. Evaluate the pros and cost of creating one-way minor street from Maine to Oregon and make one lane with parklets slash outdoor seating. This is an ambitious item that came from, I believe, a member of the community. But I think the way that the city would tackle this item, and we've discussed it, uh, I believe with the last city council and with some of you behind closed doors is we are going to attempt to go after a transportation planning grant in two thousand and twenty-four after our planning director's done with the general plan. And that document would include minor street. It would include Broadway. And it wouldn't necessarily say, hey, we want to make this one way, but it would be the backbone of an investigation. Does that make sense? Does the city council want to see it one way? There would be more outreach uh, to resolve this action rather than just saying, yes, we're committing, we're committing that it's going to be a one-way street. That's not what we're committing to. We're committing to the fact that we know we need a transportation planning document. We need an engineer to come in and work with the public and the city council because inevitably what we know is that we need to fix the sidewalks in the street down minor and Broadway. And that may mean that we get one lane. That may mean that we keep two lanes. And actually ironically, at this event, I had a member of the EPA based in the Bay Area that told me you should actually just keep it two and bring the two lanes closer together there by slowing traffic down. If you made it one way, people are going to go fifty miles an hour down the street. There's too much space. So that's action one point three, and it doesn't mean we're committed to making it a one-way street. It means we're committed to rectifying, um, really the infrastructure of Broadway and Minor Street via Transportation Planning Grant. Excuse me. So the second action item on here is action item one point six. Downtown events. Plan and conduct events downtown. Farmer's Market Beer and Brew Festival, Bluegrass Festival, concerts in the park, Miners Park. So I have been working with Sarah here tonight with Discover Siskiyou. And obviously Heather Dodds, and we had a meeting last week about uh, the ability of the EDC to take on Night of Lights and Gold Rush Days. Uh, there'll be more of that coming to you guys in the future, but something very similar to where the city makes a percentage donation and Discover Six, Siskiyou actually matches that, doubles that. And so if we were to give a ten thousand dollar donation, Discover Siskiyou would match that, double it, and the event technically would be a thirty thousand dollar event for Night of Lights and Gold Rush Day. So we are currently working on that behind the scenes to bring that to you in the future. Number three is action item two point one. Create, this is very specific, but create a Green Horn Park Master Plan that incorporates infrastructure improvements such as trail improvements, possibly an amphitheater, zip line, and amenities. This falls in line with us seeking a planning grant in two thousand and twenty-four for a Parks and Community Buildings Master Plan, not just for Green Horn, but for all of our parks, all of our community buildings. We're already headed in this direction. And these are from members of the community. Some people say, I want to see an amphitheater. I want to see a zip line. Yeah. But what a master plan does is that it helps you kind of price that out. Is that really feasible? Does the rest of the community want that? So it doesn't mean that we're committed to putting a zip line in at, at Green Horn. So but it, it does, it, it basically says that there are members of the public that are interested in exploring that. Uh, number four is action three point two. Guarantee the successful implementation of the RERC Action Plan through sustained staffing and continued events and coordination. We meet every other week with the EDC, so we're already actively doing this. And then we have brought this document to you tonight for adoption. And finally, I have two more. So number And finally have two more. So number five, action four point one. Business plan to be created, including small business formation guide and training staff for tourism opportunity. Originally, we had a North Valley or North State Chamber of Commerce. North Siskiyou, I'm sorry. North Siskiyou Chamber of Commerce that unfortunately at this moment, I think is somewhat disbanded, but they actually enter, enter, they engaged this event as well, and they engaged the Zoom calls after the fact. And this person was involved, the executive director was involved with myself and Quentin on this. This was a request that they had. I think it's a good request, but we can continue moving towards this with myself, working with Quentin Gaddy and possibly who's with the EDA, EDC, and possibly the new chamber that we're trying to help get formed with the merchants to basically just up our game on the opportunity for supporting the small businesses within our community through the EDA and the EDC. Action four point four finally here is review zoning ordinances and standards to encourage recreational economy. Ie for hip camping rental and historic identity downtown development. And so as part of your general plan, you have a commitment to, to reevaluate the zoning within your city already. You're already going to be doing this. So this is pretty low hanging fruit. Inevitably, after a general plan's done, you have, you have so many months before you have to do this zoning exercise. And it sounds like that the city's committed to really reevaluating zoning in, in its entirety because we've had a lot of public input of people wanting to reevaluate some of the zoning decisions that have been made here over the course of many decades. So those are the items that we would be, in my opinion, still engaged in. And we're already actively working on a number of them. I don't see this as a heavy lift for the city of Way Rika. Tonight, I am basically, I guess, suggesting that you adopt this document. But we're here for questions and any other follow-up that came.
Thank you, Mr. Laidbetter. Right, I will go to public comment. If anybody has public comment or questions. Public comment.
Dan Osborne. I have read over, not the appendices, all of them yet, but the first part of the document. And I just feel I need to say this, that the one of the first few pages, it talks about our economy is in decline, the timber and mining industry is in decline, and that's what's left us here. And I want to remind everybody why they are in decline. It was because of environmentalism and government action. It was the government that closed down the timber industry by the spotted out. You talk to a forester and find out if they can even do timber harvest plans now, and it costs so much to do one. Same with mining, and I can only speak to gold mining, but I know that it was a state action, California State, a moratorium in two thousand and nine that is on suction dredging primarily because it might stir up mercury. Those industries were resource-based. Resource-based industries create new wealth. Tourism does not. It moves the money around maybe, but there's no new wealth. We're seeing it now with agriculture. Our ranchers, farmers can't get water. We're losing our resource. Now, I'm all for tourism as long as we don't try to say this is going to be the end-all for our community because it's not. And it really perturbs me that the government destroyed the economy and now they're throwing out little bits and pieces to us that we can do tourism. And you all know that when you take grants from the government, there are many strings attached. You lose a little bit of your freedom. You lose a lot of your local control when you do this. There are some good things about tourism, some of the things that Jason highlighted, the different actions, you know, improving Green Horn Park, that kind of thing. I'm not advocating to accept or reject this, but I just think we need to keep in mind why we got here. And that now we're on this, I think it's a slippery slope that we're going to start getting grants to do this and this and that. And it's, it's piddling compared if we could resource. And one of the things we want to, something is written in there, appreciate nature rather than extract from nature. I think that's what nature's for. We need to respect nature. Forests are renewable. It doesn't make sense to me. Well, it does in a way, I mean, because I can understand if you tear something down and then make people feel better by giving them money to do things that will no way ever equal what they had before. And in the process, you lose freedom and local control.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Um, Marie Archie. And I would like to add roller rink to that zip line because that's a family activity. And our children also need stuff to do. So roller rink would be great. Used to go to Medford all the time and it was fun. Now the whole family. So, yeah.
Thank you, Don Marie.
This is why I come up to the talk because I love this. Louise Cleado, Way Rika. I did a tour this afternoon of just Minor Street on either side of the street. And Way Rika looks like a dying city. The sidewalks were hazardous. I took pictures on either side. I didn't go on Main or anything else. And so before, if we're talking about tourism and, and revitalizing Way Rika, I'm all for it. But I think we ought to look at our infrastructure first. Because if I was a tourist and seeing those sidewalks, I would not have a very positive outlook about Way Rika. And our streets are bad. We still have pothole. It took, it took the city conservatively three months to change and light bulbs out there in the parking lot. We, I started asking in October and I noticed tonight that all the lights were on. Thank you. But I think we need to look at that before we talk about tourism because we have to make Way Rika look presentable before we expect people to come here and spend money. And I know that people, there's lots of traffic that goes up and down I five, but a lot of those people are on their way to something else. They, they didn't come here. I came here fifteen years ago. And when I used to visit my brother, one of the first things I would do would pull into James Place. I came here because I, I shop for antiques. And we don't have any antique stores here anymore. It's all secondhand stuff. It's all, you know, it's garage sales. So I think we need to look at that and why people come here. I'm, I think it would be great to have cyclists come, cyclists spend money. We've got great trails. My son's going to come visit here in March because he's going to do one of the off-road trails that they're advertising. So I think we could do some of those things, but I think we need to fix our downtown first before we add amenities or outside eating. I would not want to sit and eat outside on Minor Street. I walked there today and people just buzz right through mine very, very fast. And the sidewalks are hazardous. So I think you need to look at that first. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise.
Diane Collier. So a lot of those things sound really good. I am not, I know you talked about the Minor Street two-way thing. I'm not for that at all. You know, have any of you guys been to like Estes Park, Colorado? It's like pure tourism and they shut the whole city down and the locals there are just like locked out of their own city. It's really, it's, it's cool, but it's kind of not. I just, that, that kind of thing, we're not the Bay Area. I don't want to be the Bay Area. We live here because it's not the Bay Area. But there is a way, I think, to make definite improvements, the zip line. I think that's pretty fun. But you know, like they're saying, these, these grants, as long as we're just aware what we're getting ourselves into because grants, it's obvious, where do they get the money? Where's grant money come from? Our pocketbooks, our taxes, and did you know that our county taxes, local taxes for counties were designed to stay specifically in the county? And the government takes eighty percent of our property taxes. That's what property tax was originally for, and they keep stealing us blind. So I just, if we just keep a close eye on what are they asking of us? I think this is a, was a great place to grow up. The ranchers now, look at the state, they want to help people. They're every single day from Wednesday of last week, the week before to last week, and then the week before that, from Wednesday to Thursday, every single day, a cow was taken down at Shasta, Little Shasta. Martin's Ranch and Prather Ranch over there, McDowell. Every single day, a six, seven hundred pound animal's being taken down by a pack of wolves. And what are the ranchers doing? It's like somebody's getting robbed every day. So the state is robbing our ranchers. They're fencing cattle off the land, and then they want to come here and help us do some of their city. So just, I'm just, again, just watch out for the wolf and sheep's clothing. It's like a wolf and wolf's clothing, you can't shoot them. So I, that's, I don't, I think that's great though. I, I do think it's good to look at what the options are as long as we're just, we don't get snuckered. You know, hoodwinked because they put in the fine print. And you know, they've already taken our money and now they're telling, oh, look, we're going to give it back to you. Aren't you so happy? And give it back to you. Spend it like this. It's like now. So that's my suggestion.
Thank you.
Renzo Love.
I'd like to address this hub and spoke model. I think that's kind of a losing proposition. We're not a hub, we're in a donut. But if you want to go hiking in Marble Mountain, you didn't stay in that. You know, if you're skiing in, on my Shasta, you stay on Shasta. Go fish in the Flat River and get covered in clouds. We need to stop worrying about all these things that are, you know, within a two-hour range. We need to concentrate on what's right here in town. Because otherwise, there's no reason to stay here. There's all these recreation facilities, Siskiyou County. There's other towns closer to it. So we need to create recreation out of this right here in town.
Corinza. Any other public comment? All right, I'll come back to the floor to City Council for any public comment or questions. I'll go to Mr. Cake. Touch off guard.
Yeah.
Wake you up.
So going, getting into the, the whole procedure of this, what, I guess, a little bit more clarification from so that better and stuff on what I guess the consequences and the perks and everything on those, because I mean, a little bit more clarification on it. Because you don't, we want to make sure that we're moving forward in a positive way. Because I mean, a lot of this stuff sounds really great. But I guess we need to figure out what are, what are the downside of this?
Yeah, there's no financial obligation. This is like approving this document is, is not a grant or tying you into anything. It's more of, you know, the community came together with these federal partners based off of, I'm assuming it sounds like twenty twenty is when the prior city council gave authority for the city to work with the EDC to go after this grant is what it sounds like to me. And so ultimately I came in while this was getting organized by Alia and Corey, actually, who may still be here tonight, I think, just rocking a baby. But so there is really, this document, I think, is more of a roadmap of you basically saying, okay, a large number of not only Nancy O'Gran, your elected officials and your city staff and your consultant organization here, the Siskiyou Economic Development Council. And then the EPA and some other state agencies came together, but also a large number of the population came to this workshop and they came up with these ideas. They want to see these improvements. And this is just basically saying, we recognize that this is the template that we are going to actively work on together because there's items on the RERC document that the city has no obligation. There's somebody else's requirement. So the EDC has some items on there that they're going to be the lead on. There's members of the community that are the lead on some other items. So let's just say the worst case scenario, you approve this document, it gets tabled and we never do any of these things. That would not be good, but you would not have any obligation to these things. And so it's just more of a commitment that you recognize this is what the people that came together are actively wanting to see. And that ultimately the zoning, we know we're already going to do the Parks Master Plan, I believe. The city council would really like to see, and I'm pretty sure that everybody in this room wants to see us do a transportation document for downtown to fix the sidewalks in the street. So those are the three big things that I think we're actively already kind of behind the scenes committed to doing. This just solidifies that and we keep working through the list, if that makes sense.
Yes, that's, that's what I wanted some clarification on. So thank you. I thought, I thought that's what we're going towards. I just the way everybody was talking, it sounds like we're trying to tie ourselves into a grant situation and it's not. So that's what I wanted some clarification on. So thank you. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Cake. Mr. Davis, Councilman Davis.
You know, I, I did have a business on Minor Street for a few years. And the one-way street was discussed off and on several times with the fire department being where they were. It wasn't really a good move because, you know, they go down Minor Street to get to Main Street. Well, if it was one way, maybe it's one way going to be up the hill. Then they'd have to go down Oregon Street. Street, whichever way to get there. So it just never really blossomed into anything. So I personally think it won't work as long as the fire department's there. And I, and I don't think it's going to be moving nearly in the near future. So, and, and my second comment is, I believe that if we adopt this tonight, these ladies that are sitting right here, they're not going to throw up the corner. They're going to dig in and make it work. That, they look like they are that type of organization. So yeah, I know a few of them. They are that kind of people. So if we adopt it, and, and I'm in favor of it, just so you know. I think we'll see some really fine stuff come here in Siskiyou County. And I, and I just want to say a couple of things about the recreation. You know, we have four wilderness areas in Siskiyou County, the Marble Mountain, the Russian world of the Siskiyou and parts, part of the Trinity Alps. You know, and we have four rivers. Besides the Klamath, we have the Shasta, the Salmon and the Scott River, and these are all boating, kayaking rivers that you can, you can go with. And we have multiple US Forest Service Campgrounds, which people that want a car camp. You know, if you want to walk and hike, like they say, the marbles, et cetera. They're wonderful places to go and you can camp and there's designated areas or areas that have been beaten out since my dad was a kid that are for camping. So if we develop those type of things and make Way Rika the hub of that development, I can't see that's bad. I think that's really a good thing. So that's where I am. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, I realize as a new council member that I'm pretty unfamiliar with the relationship between the Economic Development Council and the city of Way Rika. So please just bear with me. I have just a few questions to ask. So is there, does the city have either a contract or an MOU with the Economic Development Council?
Yeah, currently we actually have, we have both. We have an MOU and we have a contract at the moment. So, and so ultimately for very specific tasks, they receive a certain value of money, but ultimately too, if they were to seek grant funding to go facilitate some of those functions, then ultimately administrative money from the grant actually would pay for them to do the task. And so it's a pretty nominal cost of, in my opinion, it's almost a shared cost universally within. it's a pretty nominal cost of, in my opinion, uh, it's almost a shared cost universally within, uh, Siskiyou County. But you know, with the different cities in the county, all fronting some level of money on an annual basis to the EDC just to exist and perform very specific functions.
Thank you. Um, would it be possible, um, to get a copy of that?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Um, and, uh, this is an excellent, excellent, um, packet of information that was put together. But, um, I read through it a few times because I need to read through things a few times. And I, I'm just not sure how this opportunity came about, but it sounds like Mr. Ledbetter, you, um, specified that the city applied for this grant in twenty twenty?
Yeah, that would be my assumption based on what I, what I've heard this evening. And ultimately we can have the EDC maybe come up and give more background. But my understanding is, is that some of the grants that the Economic Development Council go after, and I'm assuming this one, they technically need an agency, whether that be the city of Lead or the city of Dunsmere, the, you know, the county to be the lead agency on the document and basically oversee signing that document, approving the grant application. My assumption is, is that's more than likely what transpired on this grant, but, um, we can find out more now.
Yeah, this, uh, technical assistance application predates me. But, um, yeah, sometimes the EDC will, um, write narrative proposals on behalf of cities to apply for these opportunities. And that's what happened in this instance. The EDC, uh, drafted the proposals and, um, submitted on behalf of the city.
And we had a lot, I was here, um, I wasn't the lead on this, but I was here when the application was submitted. And the former city manager, Steve Baker, was very involved in the process. And, um, we had several meetings with, um, Corey Hayden and Steve, and then our former colleague, um, Alex McBride. Um, but yeah, that, that idea was kind of, um, collaboratively come up with, um, between the three of them. So.
Yeah, and I just, if, if, if we would imagine it didn't happen, it was about to happen. Ultimately, on our Friday meeting, uh, maybe these two folks, uh, combined with Tanya Douse may say, hey, we found a great opportunity for you guys. And they would initially try to sell the staff on this opportunity. And then we would come forward at a city council meeting and ask for, uh, the ability to apply for the, a grant.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, I'm getting quite an education. Um, so, and I'm also just curious, how, uh, were the members of the steering committee selected?
I'm having a brain freeze right now.
Yeah. It was, it was kind of a collaborative effort. So we started with a number of stakeholders, um, from our tourism program, right? So we had some lodging property owners here in Waireka. Um, and then Corey Hayden, kind of the three of us kind of got together and figured out kind of this heavy hitter list of, you know, people who are engaged in this work already. And then we also, I wish Corey was still here, but I know it was opened up, um, like for community members to join too. So there wasn't a option to opt in for folks as well.
Yeah, and we created a pretty long list and not everyone responded to our outreach efforts. Um, so these were ultimately local leaders that, as Heather said, we thought, um, would bring diverse perspectives, um, to the conversation, uh, throughout the process. And, um, yeah, the federal and state partners were kind of pre-selected by EPA. These were people assigned to our program specifically.
And they had really good ideas too. Obviously they've done this work in many communities. So they had ideas, oh, do you have a group that does this? That would be a good person to include on your steering committee. You know, is there a local tribe, um, you know, that kind of thing. So they had some suggestions for us as well.
Okay, thank you. And, um, I heard that there were lots of, or members of the community that took part in the workshop. And, um, so I guess that originally was a concern of mine because there's a list of the participants from the workshop. But I only saw one who was listed as a community member. So that concerns, that concerned me. But, um, I understand, I heard tonight that there were a lot of members of the community that were involved in developing this.
There were, that is correct. And, um, can you lead me to the page that you're looking at?
Uh, one thirty-seven.
I believe we, um, listed whether they, if they were a business owner, we listed their business, um, or their organization affiliation. Um, uh, so they could have been community members, but in lieu of that, we listed, um, a business they owned in the community. Um, to, or, yeah. Essentially.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right. So I'm a process person and, um, there's so much in here that's really exciting, but there were some things that personally concerned me, um, that have to do with the city's infrastructure being included, um, in this plan, specifically, um, uh, the minor street, um, the brownfields, um, as well as the parks master plan. And I don't I can't put together in my mind, it seems to me, um, uh, Mr. Ledbetter, that, um, the parks master plan, isn't that part of like the general plan? And wouldn't the improvements on Minor Street, wouldn't those be included in the, um, the general plan?
Yeah, these are good, these are great questions because I'll be completely honest with you. And this is the city manager, Jason Leber. I was, um, pretty skeptical, no offense to these two over here, but I think, uh, they could hear my skepticism leading up to this event. Um, but ultimately with the partners, I think that they're, and they have facilitated this type of work all around the country. And they were pretty adamant that those types of, um, you can't just come in and open up a bike shop and expect that you're going to get this level of influx. They were saying, if you're really going to go after a tourism economy, where are the people that are gonna, uh, they're going to, where are they going to live in your community, right? So that's where the zoning came into play. How are you going to open up some level of housing for people to facilitate working on the recreation economy? Because in some instances, the recreation economy is seasonal and so it's not year-round per se. Uh, and ultimately, um, fixing Minor Street comes into play because I think it was pointed out by many members of the public, you can't really expect to invite people into your community and then showcase something that you're not proud of essentially. And then ultimately the Parks Master Plan came into play because I think people see the asset of Green Horn. And I think the, um, the primary reason was, I think people wanted to see more of, uh, Jacksonville and the Brit and that possibility take place at Green Horn with an, with an amphitheater that would be a regional pole, uh, essentially. So I'm not sure if I'm answering your question. I'm sorry, Ms. Baker. But that was, um, that was the reasoning behind it. But I'm sorry if you can elaborate again on your question one more time.
So, um, um, let, let's talk about the, the parks plan, the master parks plan. And, and I agree that we need one. I, I agree that it's a good thing. Um, will it be developed based on the needs of the city or will it be developed based on the recommendations to support what's in this document? And what is the priority?
Yes, that's a great point. And ultimately, as I said at the start of the meeting, the document is fluid. And so I would even suggest that maybe on on item one point three, I personally would say, let's change this to, you know, of, of an evaluation and an implementation of a transportation planning document to improve the sidewalks on Minor Street. The street and sidewalks on Minor Street and Broadway. And, and kind of remove this idea that we're going to evaluate one way on Minor Street, which inevitably we would do um, with the other verbiage that I just stated. And then the same thing with the, uh, Green Horn Master Plan, I would probably broaden that to verbiage, um, that is parks and community buildings master plan, which is what the city would like to see happen. So yeah, so I, I think that that verbiage, it can be changed ultimately. And I don't think that, um, that would alter this document, uh, greatly, in my opinion, because we would be analyzing. If we were to do a parks master plan, we would have huge community engagement. There would be mandated workshops that took place with the community. And maybe nobody would mention a zip line at that point. Quite frankly, you know, ultimately, and so we would be showing that we are going out to the public. And the master plan, that's what the document exists for is because you're getting all that public engagement. You're getting documentation to say that if there's a zip line, X number of people are committed to spending money to go utilize that zip line. So, um, if that, uh, helps in any way whatsoever, we can change that verbiage. But I don't think, I personally don't see that we're committed. We're not having somebody else drive the ship. We ultimately will drive the ship on those action items because there are action items.
Thank you very much. That's what I wanted to hear.
It's all she wanted. And all he wanted to hear about was.
And, uh, uh, my final question that I have or, uh, my concern is that I know that the Economic Development Council is also working on the Carnegie, um, building and that there were references to that building and uses in this document. And, um, I am just really concerned about, um, multiple priorities. Um, I, I'm just wondering what the EDC's priority is with regard to that Carnegie building. They came before the council in November or December with that project, and that's very exciting. Is this going to take away from the priority of getting that building finished or compete with any of your funding?
I'm going to answer on behalf of Tanya Douse and I'm going to say, uh, absolutely not. I think at this point that the please chime in, but the priority at the moment is Carnegie. And then I, I believe this implementation, um, is going to take place over multiple years. That's my understanding.
That is correct. And just to chime in on that, this is Amanda Harris, by the way. Uh, to chime into where Jason was at in regards to speaking to the priority of the Carnegie, we are currently in the, how does Corey? I'm also speaking on behalf of Corey Hayden because the Carnegie is her heart and soul right now. Uh, key priority right now is gaining funding. We are in, we've already secured numerous funding for this project. And we're kind of in the final stages of securing, uh, final funding for it as well. So we have made leaps and bounds coming forward. And it, I think we're trying to be shovel ready. Correct me if I'm wrong, I believe by March or April. That could be different. So I don't quote me on that, but it, the Carnegie right now is a key priority for the EDC. And like Jason did mention, this plan would be more, like you said, it is fluid and it would be more of a process. You know, years, not years down the line, but over a number of years versus the immediate priority.
And it is also fluid. So hypothetically, because what I think we all would like to see and what we're kind of seeing now is, um, more, uh, standard um, meetings where the EDC comes and presents to you with what would you like to see us do this year? And here's what we did last year and ultimately utilizing possibly this document and changing it with you, the city council. And then, um, reporting back to you, what did we do in this document? How far, how is this coming along? We want to alter this. We're not worried about that anymore. Um, but we're trying to bring everybody into that level of communication and I think it's starting to happen.
Well, that concludes my questions. Thank you very much. I appreciate, uh, your patience. This is, um, you know, a learning curve for me. And I really just want to make sure that I'm understanding all these different, uh, processes and how things work together. Um, but I, you know, I really would like to see that, um, maybe the Economic Development Council come before us with a list of everything that they're working on, on behalf of the city of Waireka. Um, so that as a new council member, I'm just aware of all those things. And I appreciate the work that went into this and I, I really do appreciate you guys coming tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we do, we do come quarterly, but if, if it would be beneficial for us to come more often than not, we're happy to present as often as we'd like us here. You're going to get sick of us.
I, I just, man. I think, um, yeah, they come quarterly, but maybe, um, Councilman Baker can meet with you and Jason if you want to. Would that be okay? Instead of coming before the whole council, they come quarterly to see, you want them to bring you a list, meet with them?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll organize that.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I don't know, maybe, maybe Mr. Davis would, would like to have an update too. Cause he's new on board too. So maybe that would be something he would like to join in on because you can't have two council members present. So.
Right. Mr. Davis, do you want to join?
Okay.
I will, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, uh, city manager, I will schedule that and, uh, I'll work with you guys. So over the next month or so, we'll get something, um, to meet at the EDC.
Great. Thank you. Okay, um, Kurt and McCoy. I don't think where I was at. I think where is that?
Well, I'm going to speak to Councilman Davis for a minute. Um, I appreciated what you had to say about the, about Minor Street. I did appreciate that. You're probably not aware, and I don't think anybody in here is, that we had a council person who ran on the idea of changing Minor Street and they wanted to cut, they wanted to widen it, not, not narrow it. And cut six feet off the front of every building. But you know that. That's an interesting one, isn't it? Yeah, they, they wanted to cut six feet off each side. So I thought you'd find that it, it's kind of an amusing thing.
Clarify, that was a while ago.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's probably twenty, that was twenty, twenty-four years ago. So I want to thank, um, uh, Aleah and Heather, uh, and, and, and everybody from the EDC to be here, uh, for being here tonight. I appreciated your presentation. I'll try and keep this, um, uh, fairly brief. I went through this, uh, yes, yes, sir. Sure. Um, this is a great roadmap for the city. This is not a binding document. I love it. When I moved here in nineteen eighty-six, I am a flatlander, uh, to all of you who have been here all your life. Um, one of the things that I was amused at and bemused by was looking into Sunset Magazine and seeing, uh, small towns like McLeod and like, um, Willets and other towns in Northern California advertise for people to come and visit in the back of Sunset Magazine, come and fish, come and kayak, come and raft and stay here and stay there. And we, at the time, we had two bed and breakfasts on Third Street and I think we had another one on Lane, uh, at the time. And I could, I couldn't figure out why businesses in Waireka wouldn't advertise because it's such a beautiful place. And, um, and that's why I came here. So anyway, I think this, um, this is a very broad look at that. It's a very broad roadmap and I want to thank you for bringing it in. Um, we're not committed to anything. However, we want business here. We want, I mean, there used to be a time when I would talk to people when I was working in the school system and they'd say, we want tourist dollars because it's clean money. Some people don't want, some people will want tourist dollars. Some people don't want them to come in. No, we don't want to be necessarily crowded like, you know, Mount Shasta where you have three or four hundred people in the middle of winter eating on the main street, uh, outside on the sidewalks. But you know, we want some kind of a balance there. And some things in this, we're already working on master plan for the parks. Something that, uh, we've talked about, I think with the last council for about a year and a half, just, um, for very basic reasons, like saving money on water and things like that, uh, being able to upgrade things. But it all plays into this. Um, you know, I, I, I will not disagree that sidewalks throughout the city are not as, uh, great as they could be. But again, maybe that's something where we as a council can, if we decide to, we can direct the city manager to send letters out to each of the, uh, look at the, look at the code and send letters out to each of the, uh, owners of the property and remind them that they need to go out there and fix them. Since that is their, uh, it is their, it is their responsibility, just like it is our responsibility on our homes. The, uh, the property owners. Um, you know, uh, maybe we also need to, um, well, I, I, I'm going to leave it at that at this point in time. Um, I, I, Lorenzo, uh, made a great point. We're not a hub. But we, we probably would be a hub for enough people to come here and, and do some things. Um, this document is merely a tool. That's what it is. We used to have people come regionally. When I first moved here, when Bob Marshall ran the community theater. And we had people like Anthony Zerby that would come in and read poetry. And we had other people that were, I guess you'd call them Hollywood types or famous that would come in and, and, and put on shows. And then we had some good local shows. And, you know, we'd fill the And, you know, we'd fill the theaters. It's only three or four hundred people, but you know, that's that's a lot of people if forty or fifty of those are coming from out of town. Is it coming from, you know, thirty or forty miles away? We also, when Jeff Shin ran the theater, we had Michael Martin Murphy a couple of times. We had several. Several other artists we've had and Red Scarf has brought in Adrian Zemed's boys, the Zemed brothers. That is, all these things are well attended and and again, the reason being that they were looking for a small arena. They that they wanted to come to, that they wanted to perform at, and a lot of people like are 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 on their way from one place to another and they just want to stop. And so we've been able to, since we're on the I five quarter, we've been able to to appeal to that. So I love the roadmap. Do do I? Well, what I what I think personally doesn't matter. Because I'm not, I'm not a person here. I'm one-fifth of a of a councilman serving this city. Do I think there are great ideas in it? Yes, I think they're wonderful ideas. Do I think we're gonna implement all of it and get to do all of it? No way. I don't think in a thousand years and with three million dollars, we'd be able to get to do all of it. But just the thought that somebody might want to put a theater in, or that somebody might want a zip line, or somebody might want a roller skating rink. Or a skate bar park, or that we might be able to get five or six more boutique businesses on Minor Street and another three or four on on Broadway. That's enough to kind of to really push me to support it. Along with looking at housing. Housing is the key thing that this council has been hearing about for the last. I don't know, four or five months. Housing is crucial here. Without the fires, it becomes much more crucial. Because we're trying to house people from the fire. So I want to again, thank. EDC for everything you've done on it. And I'm not always, I've not always been, you know, big supporter. But I think people need to be recognized when they've done some good work and I I really think you ladies and gentlemen at EDC have done some good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett and McCoy.
Mr. Mayor, can I add real quick? Real quick, we we are the hub. Siskiyou County is, we we can say that we are not, but we are the hub of all Siskiyou County and bring in whatever you say, recreation, bring in. Industry, whatever, but Waireka is the hub of Siskiyou County, plain and simple. We always have been. That's why we have. The everything here, we have the fairgrounds, we have all that. So it is the hub and we need to work on making it that way. So that's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right. With that, I want to thank you guys for your work and then also the public comment and also. Every council member for their questions and comments and again, we can have our opinion all day, but what I'm impressed about is probably this was. Since my time sitting here and just over two years, I think that was probably the most attended outreach the community. Had come together to participate in for what they want and. I was unfortunately ill and couldn't make the event, but I heard great things about it. And the community coming together, you know, these are their needs and their wants, what they set down and submitted. So. Thank you so very much for that. I heard it was a wonderful time. With that said, I'm gonna go to the floor for a motion to adopt the Reka Community Action Plan Recreation Economy and Rule Communities. To have a motion.
So moved and I also want to thank both Joan Smith Freeman and Debbie Baird. Former council persons who supported this and were out for this training and gave up a lot of their time. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett and McCoy. Have a motion from Brett and McCoy, do I have a second?
I'll make a second.
And a second from Councilman K. Can I will go to roll call? Councilman K. Councilman Davis.
I without the addendum.
Councilman Baker.
I.
Brett and McCoy.
I.
And. Mayor Middleton, I. Thank you, motion passes. Hey, so now we go to agenda title. This is a request to change meeting date for city council meetings from Tuesday nights to Thursday nights. At the last city council meeting held on December twenty, twenty twenty-two, city council member Dwayne Keg requested. That an item be placed on a future council meeting to change the city council meeting nights from Tuesday to Thursday.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Jason Lubbiter, City Manager, and thank you, Waireka City Council. So ultimately, looking back here with the Assistant City Manager. Who put this together for us tonight in September of twenty twenty. Ordinance eight, five, eight was introduced and implemented. Which changed the meeting date at that point, I believe, from Thursday to Tuesday. And the meeting date change became effective January of twenty twenty-one, so relatively recently. The fiscal impact to this is just cost of staff and and legal to prepare, publish and update and ordinance websites and meeting calendars. So. There's not a major financial impact on whatever decision is made here this evening. This has not gone to the finance committee, but ultimately analyzing this from the staff side, I would say that. As it currently stands, my impression along with staff is that technically right now, it's probably in the best. Scenario or the best date for staff. But it's not unfathom unfathomable. To change and it's not the end of the world. We certainly will acquiesce to whatever the city council wants to decide tonight. My only fear is that if we move the meetings to Thursday in a normal. City council structure, that would mean that we would post agendas on Monday. But I believe that the intent may be to post the agenda still on Friday. Have the weekend and then all of the extra time to review that agenda, which I can completely understand. My fear is that ultimately what I can see happening is that. Staff will be in here on Saturdays and Sundays because the sky is always falling in government. And that we will ultimately be making emergency changes to the agenda because technically we have until Monday. And so I think that in my opinion. I can't speak for you guys and I know that there is a lot of information sometimes, but for me, the weekend is ideal to read that information. So I am recommending that we actually continue as is and just leave it. On Tuesdays, but ultimately I really leave it up to you and you are not going to. Hinder us if you decide to do it on Thursday. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lubbiter. And I'll go to the public for comment. On this item, they like us here on Tuesday night or Thursday nights, or do you care? Come on down and tell me. Come on down and tell us, please.
Louise Gliado, Waireka. I understand what Jason says and it makes sense to me. However, from a community member's standpoint, I don't know how many people in the audience here go to the Board of Supervisors meetings, but they're on Tuesdays. And oftentimes when I've been there, they've run to five o'clock in the afternoon. So and even Nancy has commented about it. So if you go to the Board of Supervisors meetings and stay. And then you come here, that's a very long day. So in terms of the community members. I would prefer on Thursdays, but I understand your reasoning in terms of having to read all that and staff having to come in on Saturday. So there really isn't an easy fix one way or the other, but for whatever it's worth, I would prefer Thursdays.
Thank Louise, but they meet only once a month, correct? Twice every Tuesday, same Tuesdays as us? Okay.
For the board meetings.
I need you to come to the podium though for so way they can hear you. Thank you. The people listening can't hear you on the request, yeah. Thank you.
I just saying that the board meetings are already posted, the schedule for the whole year. And so you can find them on the website, but they don't always go every other. Sometimes they back to back them. It depends on holidays. So there's no set. Yeah, so, all right.
Thank you.
Oh, can I make a comment? Do you guys, do you guys have like? Connections to like Caltrans and there's no painted road signs and your lights aren't on at the other end of town. They're twinkling like a strobe light. Just if you guys have information, let me know. Because Caltrans.
That's Caltrans. Yeah, we'll talk to Caltrans. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, yeah, it's Caltrans. If some main street is Caltrans.
My only comment is if you switch, then. And city council falls after planning commission. Right now, it's, you know. Before planning commission is before.
Thank you, Don Mary. Any other public comment? We're trying to shorten them up a little bit. We're trying. Thank you, Lorenzo. Any other public comment? All right, if not, I'm gonna go to Councilman K, go to Councilman, go to Councilman K to. He brought it for us to plead his case here.
So the reason why I brought this, one of the council is a couple of reasons. I got a lot of. Consentuents that actually complained about not being able to get enough time to review the agenda. They get it on Friday. If they're lucky, a lot of them don't see it till Monday and then have city council meeting on Tuesday. So. Main reason why, that's the main reason why I brought it forth was for the citizens. That's why I'm here. Second reason is I've noticed, I've noticed in the past. And this is a past, I'm not saying right now that council, certain council members in the past didn't have enough time to review the agenda properly. And as long as we could, I feel as long as we could have the agenda out, no emergency things like we're talking, it's emergency means it's got to come next, next time. But as long as the agenda could be put out on Friday, like it should be. Then it gives everybody more time, it gives the citizens more time to review it. It gives the council more times to review it. And I think it's more productive for us as a city. But that's my own opinion, but I do know that I like said, I had a lot of citizens wanting that also, wanting it. Brought forward and changed back to Thursdays because we had it on Thursdays for. All till twenty twenty-one and every, all the years that I was on council, all the years I was on planning commission, nothing has changed. It got changed then and that was request. Actually, I know Mr. McCoy requested it, but it was actually the request of. Our previous city manager was who requested it, saying that it was make his staff more productive. But we, I also talked to you and say it's not a matter of productivity, it's a matter of people wanting to throw something in. At last minute, it's your major concern and not productivity. So. That's why I'm bringing it forward. What's up to the council, whatever they want to do, but I just know that, like I said, the citizens have spoke to me. And I know and I've watched council members, previous council members. Struggle because they didn't have enough time to review certain documents. When we get big documents, just like we just had tonight. On EDC and everything. I don't know how many of this council read every bit of this. I mean, I read it all through here, but. I don't know if everybody was able to read every line item on that and. That's that's on the council, being able to say that they've read every line item on this on this agenda. So if you can, as a council, if you can honestly say that you had absolutely a hundred percent enough time to read through all of this. And continue to do that, then. Let's go for it. Keep it where it's at. If you think you need more time as a council to make sure that you do a proper job and read through everything thoroughly. Then change it to a Thursday as long as we can bring the agenda out on Friday, not on Monday. It still can be posted on Monday, doesn't matter. Post date can still come on whatever time you want to do it. But it's the agenda needs to be brought brought forth on a Friday, so we have proper time to review it. So. That's where I stand. And that's why I brought it forward.
Great, thank you, Mr. K. Councilman K. Do you have any other comments? I'll go to Councilman Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm very excited to be able to say that. I was in the agenda business for over twenty-five years. And so I'm very excited because I have council members that talk about their their businesses and their. Previous careers and so I get to mention mine now. My experience with something like this, it seems like it it's a no-brainer in some respects. I mean. From the outside, but I know from a business practice and from office workflow, this is a huge significant change. And there are. Some prohibitions with the Brown Act regarding agendas. I don't think that. Those things have been maybe taken into consideration, but. I just know that my concern is if we move this with the idea of keeping the agendas coming out on. Thursday nights or Fridays like they have been, we're actually gonna slow business down because. Things will not be able to be put on the agenda. And if we are constantly amending an agenda for last minute items, that's just gonna send the public into a tailspin of suspicion. Why? Why is this last minute? Where's this coming from? And I know because I've lived it. And in addition to that. We are hearing as a council. That there is a lack of communication between the city and the public. And making a change like this, I think would not be in the best interest of the public. I think that we need consistency. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Baker. Come on, Davis.
Mr. Mayor, I'm in favor of keeping it on Tuesday. It seems to work out quite well for me.
All right, thank you. Mayor Brett and McCoy.
Councilman Davis has told me to keep it short. I would be in favor of keeping it the way it is right now.
And in my opinion is. Receiving a Friday for me is great because Sunday is usually my down day where I take and read. From morning to night, because usually I'm busy six days a week. Sunday is usually my day where I can really focus on. Our review, go back and review. Actually, usually I start earlier reviewing the packet and then. I can take Sunday to go back and read my highlights or anything I marked. So I like receive it. I like having the whole weekend to. Review it, my opinion. So, okay. I'm gonna, it looks like it's actually a discussion. I think it might be. I think I think it's an action item, so we have to go for a vote. All right, so I'm gonna go to the floor for. A motion, I guess it's a motion favoring.
Exactly.
Favoring it to keep it on, or actually to move it to Thursday night. Do I have a motion for it to go to Thursday night?
Obviously, obviously I'll make the motion, but.
Yeah, can I make, can I make a comment?
Okay.
Yes, please.
Actually, it would be a motion to direct the city council to draft an ordinance changing the date.
Okay, so I will go to the floor to. The council to. To direct for a change to the ordinance to bring the meetings to Thursday night instead of Tuesday night.
Unfortunately, the agenda is not worded that way, so it can't be done. It can't be brought up that way though either.
Don, did you hear that?
I heard it. I think there's enough room that you could do that, do it that way.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make the motion. I know it's not gonna get shot down, but it's okay. I'll make the motion to change the meeting nights from Tuesdays to Thursday nights. Which I'm sure there'll be no second, but that's okay. I still think it'd benefit myself. I really do, but. I'm not myself and I'm fine with it. I'm hoping it would benefit our citizens and us, but as long as it would get out on a win on a Friday night still.
Thank you. I do not have a second, so the motion fails to the floor. Thank you, everybody. Right, time of that meeting, mayor council members reports are actually. Yeah, so according to the AB one, two, three, four. So according to the AB one, two, three, four, council members shall make a brief report or file a written report or meeting event conference attended at city expense. So Mr. McCoy.
I will keep it short and I will have no council member statements or requests. I just want to say that I had a good ride along with Sergeant Hasmeyer of, from five AM in the morning.
Statements.
Yeah, this, this is a report. Oh, report. Yeah, so I wanted to report on that, on, on that ride along with YPD. And just a few things that I had seen within the community. I think it's important for us as council members to know. We wrote, we rode from five AM to five PM. We were a little late because we had something that happened right at the end. Uh, but uh, we, the first thing we did, first thing out of the box, about five twenty, we made a loop around the unhoused on what people refer to as homeless hill. We made a loop to check on people and, and drive by and we did not walk up the hill, but we did watch and look for any kind of suspicious behavior, not that we wouldn't know what a suspicious behavior is when you have that many people camping there. We did the same thing at the end of the evening, right around four forty five. We did, we went by twice during the day, engaged people that, that happened to be there, that to chat with them about things. The other thing we did was prior to me coming on about three thirty, they had a fairly good drug bust of fentanyl and black tar heroin. Um, I did not get to see it, but I saw pictures of it as it was being lodged into evidence. Um, during the day, we had a shoplifting case at a North County business. Two units responded. We identified the perpetrator, alleged perpetrator, the car. And myself and Sergeant Hasmeyer minus Lieutenant Luna left and the other officer stayed to take care of some paperwork with the business. And twelve minutes later, we located and apprehended the shoplifter and the all the items at Autozone. And then again, we had a couple of medical calls. And so I, I do want to tell you that we were, I twelve hours, I don't think I've ever ridden on a twelve hour, I've been a ten hour. We were in every neighborhood two or three times and, and I was very impressed with what the three officers on duty were doing and the contacts we were making. I would encourage everybody to get a chance to ride along. And like I said, I've, I've only ridden five times, but I go for the whole shift. Unfortunately, the only disappointment I had was that I had to ride with Sergeant Hasmeyer. And I really went to ride with Lieutenant Luna, so.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Councilman Baker.
So I actually do have a brief report under item number eight, and that's I will also have an opportunity under item ten. Or.
That's a brief announcements, reports, request staff report of council, yeah.
So I just would like to report to the council and to the public that I did attend a cannabis and community development webinar that was hosted by the California League of Cities. And I found it just really fascinating. So I just wanted to let you guys know that I'm looking at cannabis.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis.
You know, we attended that Lola meeting downtown and it was very, very interesting. I, I thought that bringing the mayors together and each of the councils that wanted to attend together was really a positive influence on our county. Cause you know, we have a tendency to be divided north and south. And I, I didn't feel that that night. You know, and half the people in the north, I, I knew, you know, Scott Valley contention was pretty easy to know that. But it was a very, very informative and very nice and social thing. I sat with a couple of guys from Dunsmere and, and our Warrica supervisor at dinner and it was, it was a great table. We had a good time.
Great.
Very informative. And so thank you for letting me go.
You're welcome.
Good food too.
Yeah, our Lola dinners are usually great and it's great to hear from you know, every city, what they have going on, what's working, what's not working, the good, bad, the ugly. But great group of people. I mean, everybody's there to serve and great people. And we got a lot of compliments for where we had it and our speakers were great. We had Dr. Clark from the county speaking about the future with the homeless shelter and different things. And then also we had Rain Rock Casino present with their expansion. So it was a great, a great event. Glad you could make it. Sorry, you missed it. No, you had something come up, but everybody else made it. And so next time, yeah, and I think it's
This good food.
Weed, weed, weed's supposed to hang in April, so. Oh, great.
Yes, I'll just make a brief. Report wise, attended the point in time committee meeting today. Seven counties in North State. They were finalizing the app for us to use for the point in time count. We've already finalized everything on the forums and everything else. Bring up everybody up speed on the point in time counts, I count the homeless individuals, which we are going to be doing next Wednesday. Um, if anybody's interested in doing training to help count the, the homeless individuals, we are doing that tomorrow at four o'clock at Behavioral Health at the Red Oak Room again. And that will be doing, that'll be the training part of that to train everybody to go out to do homeless count. And then like I said, next Wednesday, we'll be doing the actual count while I'll have a, the next to Behavioral Health next Wednesday, we have actually an event going on. The event is bringing together a bunch of different entities. Like here we have right next to, we will have we're gonna have a food tent, a survey tent, United Way, Six Stones, yes, Youth Empowerment, Siskiyou. Be able to have, we have a health will be there, social services will be there of sorts. And public health will be there too. So there'll be lots of, there'll be food giveaways, they're giving away backpacks, they're giving away all sorts of great gifts and stuff to the homeless individuals. We'll be doing also gift cards to the individuals to encourage, so we get some of the information from the homeless individuals and which was required by HUD. Hopefully, we'll get that to some good numbers. Mr. McCoy and I went out Sunday and identified some camps around, around town, besides the ones that's up on the hill, like you said, expressed earlier. There's actually a number of other camps that are still kind of hidden away and we're gonna go out again this weekend to finalize some more of the camps located around town. We're also through this point in time count, we're also hitting all the Siskiyou County. It's not just Warrica, it's all Siskiyou County. So we'll be hitting Mount Shasta. We have an event going on down there, a smaller event, just through one of the community churches down there. Um, and then we're going out to Weed and some of the other areas out there too, but it's gonna be a big event here in Warrica, and we're also gonna go out the following Sunday, um, which is the twenty ninth, I think it is, twenty ninth. The tailgaters are doing the SAC giveaways at the Pacific Tower office there that they do every Sunday. And we're also kind of play on words, but we're also tailgating on the tailgater. So on what they're doing with our account. So they're nice enough to let us join in on their event that they do every Sunday to where we can get a lot of numbers from those. But if anybody has any questions, get ahold of me. If they want to be participate in the point in time count, we need as many volunteers as we can get. Contact Mr. McCoy too. He's, he's actually gonna be running the Warrica part of it. We're going out and about. We're just kind of tag team it together, but Paul's gonna be supervising that part of it. But it should be a good event and hopefully gets as many numbers, because this helps Warrica. Whether you're for or against homelessness, this is one of the avenues that we need to count the homeless individuals to where we know how many we have in Siskiyou County, because there is a lot of funding that comes through the state that comes through to Siskiyou County because of the count. And that's the only way they recognize how many homeless individuals we have is by knowing how many we have. And it wasn't as of six years ago, that wasn't even happening. So we just started doing this five, a little over five years ago. Um, when I got on board, it was this thing that I was passionate about to make sure that we had that, those numbers, so we can actually get some funding to move forward. Um, for the training or for the, the event, the events starts on, on, on Wednesdays, you're talking next Wednesday, is that what you're talking about? Yeah, ten to four. Yeah, ten in the morning. It's most people be showing up eleven, but for our, everybody that's working events from ten to four o'clock in the afternoon. The training is tomorrow at four o'clock at Behavioral Health at the Red Oak Room. One hour, a little approximately, it might run over a little bit longer than an hour, because we got a, a little bit we have to go through. We go through it pretty, pretty rapidly though. It's pretty easy to go through with most of the procedures and stuff. Yeah, wherever, but where the homeless camp is up by Green Horn, yeah, that's right there. Neighbor Health is, yeah, and it's a Red Oak Room. First room on the right when you go inside of Behavioral Health. Is for the training? No, unless you're gonna be doing, unless you're actually gonna be participating in the actual count itself. No, the training is just for people to go out and, out and do the actual count. Anybody that's doing, doing that. No, that's fine. Yeah, you, you don't have to do the count. Yeah, if you're gonna do your thing, that's great, but you don't have to do the training, no. Right, right. I'll keep, gotta try to keep it short.
All right, so I don't have anything, so I will go to the city manager staff reports.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Warrica City Council. This is Jason Leibert, the city manager. Uh, as multiple council members mentioned here this evening, we had the Lola meeting Wednesday, one eleven at Black Bart's in Warrica. I thought it was a good success and a good showing for Mr. Ken Barnes in the city of Warrica and Minor Street as well. Uh, as I've mentioned, last meeting, the week of February sixth is the city manager conference in Carlsbad. I will be out of the office, but I will be attending our city council meeting via Zoom. And I will be available all week working, so feel free to contact me if necessary. Planning Commission meeting tomorrow. Uh, we had one of our, well, we had two new planning commissioners here this evening, one of them being sworn in Marley Billingsley. So this will be her first meeting as well as Ann Owens. If anybody chooses to attend, you're welcome to attend. They will be talking about the housing element. Um, and that is at five thirty here in council chambers. On one nineteen, we have a busy, we have a busy week, folks. And so on one nineteen, we have the finance committee meeting at eleven AM here in council chambers with council member McCoy and council member Baker, uh, who are on that committee. And then that morning, January nineteenth, we have the Warrica Fire Department ad hoc fire meeting with council member Keg and council member McCoy. That one will be bright eyed, seven thirty AM over at the community center. We have a special meeting on one twenty four, so a week from today, we'll have a special meeting here, another city council meeting to discuss the housing draft element. Uh, and then just for the public and city council, I made you aware of this via email earlier. The city has partnered with the county and the Warrica Methodist Church to have a warming center open this week on Thursday and Friday, one nineteen and one twenty from six PM to eight AM at the Warrica Methodist Church on Fairlane. Fairchild, I'm sorry, across the street from my house, yeah.
I like it.
Yeah. And then I'll be interested in just for everybody's identification, I will be looking back at what transpired today at the county board of supervisors meeting. But I am under the impression that a lease agreement was signed by the board of supervisors for a shelter in the city of Warrica. So I will dig into that more today or tomorrow. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Leibert. Okay, I will go to council members for any other requests, brief announcements, reports. Or request to staff to report, um, counsel on any matter subsequent meeting. I'll go to Councilman Baker. Thank you. Ready to go.
Thank you. So um, I want to mention again that I keep hearing about the disconnect between the public and the city. And so I would like to throw out a suggestion for the city council to consider is maybe just having an educational agenda item on a future agenda where we have staff go through the types of information that are available on the website where it's available. And I know that you can sign up to receive the agendas directly via email. And I encourage people to do that. But just a kind of a general overview of this is what the city offers on their website and this is how you can find information. Um, and then as well as I'm sure that when we open it up to public comment, we would probably re, receive some ideas about how else to get the word out about what's going on with the city. And I, I personally have found that the newsletter that comes out with the water bills just really, really informative as well. But there's a lot of really good stuff on our website. And I just think that maybe with a little bit of direction and information, we might encourage people to start really utilizing that resource. And then Mrs. Osborne brought up about public comments sent via email that perhaps a policy would be a good idea, and I would like to see that.
We are working on that.
And who's we?
City manager and our attorney.
Okay.
Yeah.
Before the council or?
Abs, absolutely. Yeah, yep. And actually, if you don't mind, council member Baker, if I can just respond to your first inquiry. Our assistant city manager had a great idea, and I'll just throw this out to you and ultimately to the council. And that was basically forming an ad hoc over this communication idea and possibly getting two city council members to join city staff and doing workshops to dig in with the public on how they would like to see the communication improved. And I'm not sure if that is an idea that you would support and we go in that direction, or if you would prefer to do both items or just stick with the educational agenda item.
I actually like the idea of the ad hoc committee and then maybe coming at some point and giving a report.
Okay, and then.
I'll be happy to volunteer for that if it comes about.
Okay, and since I, I haven't mentioned that to any, anybody else, so I guess I would just see if we had some consensus that it would be okay for staff to work on forming an ad hoc and then bringing it back to city council like we did with the, the fire ad hoc committee.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Yeah, ask, I guess you want to ask council to bring that forth.
Yeah, is that, is that, you know, bring that forward with the ad hoc committee for everybody okay with that?
Yeah, okay, and I'm sorry, I, because I'm not, I don't think you were done, so anyway.
Oh, no, thank you. Thank you for interrupting. I, I needed that. And then also, how can the public get a copy of the housing element update? Are they available at the city or?
I will have to verify that it is available online and whether or not, okay. And, and we will print a copy at City Hall for anybody in the public.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Davis. Any other comments or requests?
I have one comment. You know, that Lola meeting, I, I heard some really good news and that was the fact that COS is getting close to reopening their nurses programs right here in town. And, and that's a, that's a really a positive thing. Yeah, my wife graduated from that program when it was going before. And then she went on, you know, Simpson and then Oregon Health and Science. Also, I thought Dr. Clark did an excellent job with her program.
Thank you. Anything else?
I know, actually, you did exactly what I was gonna say. She nailed it, what I, exactly what I wanted to discuss too. So thank you for bringing that up. Um, one other thing is I think, uh, Mr. McCoy, I know has mentioned it in the past, is maybe for a future discussion on the urban campsite. We would like to see, hear about some more of what's going on there. I know we're looking at that. So I know the public would like to know and get informed on what's happening with. I know the public would like to know and get informed on what's happening with the urban campsite. So. Correct, still, yes, I'm sorry, yes, I mean. No, you're right, you're right, you're absolutely right. So after the, after that, we'd like to have an update on that, so.
So the end of February?
Yeah, if it's okay, if it pleases the council, either that, that, uh, right after the RFP closes. Or as soon as we are finalizing a contract with whoever's gonna clean up the soil, so, yeah.
Hold on one second, you guys, you guys, hey. We're talking about some very serious, okay, attention please, sorry. Okay.
Perfect, um, yeah, that way we can get some updates, because that kind of goes hand in hand too with, um. Being able to have an urban campsite is what, um, if we want to see programs like the nursing program succeed with COS. Uh, we need to have, um, that area help, help them out too. So helping them out means cleaning up what's next to them. And I don't know about the rest of you, but I wouldn't, uh, I wouldn't send my daughter to COS right now. With everything that's going on there. And I su- I'm support, I'm up there, I know about the, you know, urban campsite and everything else, but. We were, it's the location is not a proper location right, as of right now. We're doing it right now because we need to have someplace for the homeless individuals to go. Um, unhoused individuals to go, but it's not the proper place. It's not. It's not a flat ground for any homeless individuals that are, um, experiencing any type of, of, uh, handicap. Accessibility problems, which there is a couple of them that are up on the hill right now that are going through that, that prob- problem. Where they have to be in a wheelchair and stuff like that. So the hillside is not a proper location. For an urban campsite for people experiencing homelessness. So that's goes hand in hand why we need to address the situation. Whether it be at the, at the location that, that we've had in the past, that we've discussed over there off.
So we, so we have direction, correct? You just gave a direction to bring it back?
Yes.
Okay, okay, for the, what day? Sorry.
Well, it's gonna be after the February agenda, so.
Well, he's gonna be, Mr. Ledbetter's be gone, so probably be.
Yeah, we have an RFP out on the street right now for soil removal and, uh, once that RFP closes, I think it would lead to the final meeting in February for discussion.
That work, everybody?
Okay, so that's. Getting into what I was saying, that's the reason why is because we need to address an urban campsite proper, a proper urban campsite, not. One that's on a hillside, so, um, that's all I have, so.
And nothing for me. Okay, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody for coming. Have a good night.
Good night.
Oh, yes, do you see me keep looking? Yeah, I don't know where it's coming from.
Oh, really?
No, you have good. Oh, no, don't you see me looking?
Oh, I've heard that before, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know where it's coming from, but. I ca- I keep, I keep looking up as well.
Maybe if you turn him off when you, because I can hear him writing, I can hear him writing.
Yeah, they really, the face actually probably amplifies more than the speaker.
The entire meeting, I guess, just hearing bong, bong, bong.
Oh, no, yes.
Distracting.
Yeah.